Okay, hello everyone. We have a very busy agenda tonight with two presentations, so we'll just start right away. I hope and plan that Matt Rowland will be with us. So, welcome to the Select Board Meeting. Today's the 23rd of February, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ed, do you want to start with the preamble, please?
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certifications of the open meeting law, General Law's Chapter 30A, 718, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020, and March 23rd order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by go to zoom.us/join, hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of the screen, type in the meeting ID of 864-9157-8167, password 288993, hit "Join." Please be sure to mute your device when joining it. Note, to join in video meeting with a cell phone, you load the Zoom app from the app. Call in telephone number at 646-558-8656, or by watching Public Access TV Charter Spectrum Channel 91. In-person attendance and public comment at Select Board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, it will be read at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, it will be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via emails selectmen@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public on the Select Board agenda.
Thank you very much, Ed. We have no public hearings or no appointments and resignations that are on the agenda. Before we start, does anybody have any announcements or words of gratitude or gems of wisdom?
Yes, I love seeing Art Lawrence's face. That is awesome.
Hi, Art. Hi, Lucy. Hi, Bob. Hi, Dan. Nice to have you here.
I miss you.
I just want to say thank you to the Highway Department. We've had a lot of weather lately, and I just want to say thank you to everybody who's helping to clear our streets and keep everybody safe.
Yep. Renee, I've got one announcement, if you don't mind, if this is a good time to do it.
Yep.
There's going to be kind of a sort of a celebration of a community art project is being proposed by the church in conjunction with the community. And the idea is to sort of kind of start to celebrate a little bit. Spring is coming, Easter's coming, the equinox is coming. We're starting to get our vaccinations and starting to come out of the darkness a little bit. So, the idea was to try and do a community art project, and the idea is to make basically what we're calling a paper quilt. The theme is going to be renewal, and the church is going to be providing little art kits, which is basically going to be a small envelope of art materials. But basically, everybody in town, not only church, the entire town, whoever wants to participate, is able to come by the church and pick up basically a package that will include an eight-by-eight-inch square. And it's only that eight-by-eight-inch square that needs to be decorated. And the times for coming by the church will be Saturday, the 27th of February, and March 6th. And that's from 10:00 until 12:00, and people will be there to hand out the package of art materials remotely, so you can just pick it up as a drive-through and go by. And then they're going to be returned to the church by March 20th. So, your completed square gets returned, and then we're going to compile a big, sort of a big quilt to be displayed outside on the weekend of March 27th. So, young or old, no matter what your artistic talents are or aren't, everybody is invited to kind of join in and just kind of have a little bit of a spring celebration, a little bit of trying to start fresh. So, again, the theme is renewal and community art project. So, feel free to let me know if you've got any questions, or they can always call the church number, church office at 527-1173. Okay, thanks.
Thanks a lot, Chris. Appreciate that. Let's move right into the Select Board reports. Who would like to start?
Okay, I'll start. The Finance Committee met last night and held their first in a series of budget meetings with department heads. Last night, they met with the Police Department and the Assessors Department. And from my last report, I did report that they've scheduled two meetings a week for the next three to four weeks, so that they have ample time to meet with every department head and still meet the budget deadline of April 1st to the Select Board. So, they're meeting again tomorrow night, and if people are interested, the budgets to be presented tomorrow night is the Council on Aging, the Library, and the Fire Department. They're already scheduled for next Monday for Highway, Treasurer Collector, and Town Clerk. So, that's what they're up to. The next group, next committee is the Bylaw Committee, and they're meeting this Thursday on February 25th at 1:00 via Zoom. There are items, bylaw items later on on the agenda, so I just will spare everyone a report because we'll catch up then. And then finally, the Personnel Policies and Procedures Board will be meeting, hasn't met since our last Select Board meeting, and they will be meeting on February 25th this Thursday. They're going to continue to review and revise, if needed, the personnel rules and regulations. And we'll be looking, finally, we'll be looking at the salary scales and a couple of other items on that agenda. So, that's it for me.
Thanks, Francine. Any questions for Francine?
Oh, I love that we have a great Finance Committee now.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Is the committees listed somewhere of when they're meeting with the Finance Committee?
They'll be in the, you know, in the meeting announcement. And when I can and I know enough in advance, I know for the next two meetings, I read you the 24th, which was Council on Aging, Library, and Fire Department. That's tomorrow. Then next Monday is Highway, Treasurer Collector, and Town Clerk. I don't know who's on deck for March 3rd yet. But yeah, Matt, you just reminded me that the reason I forwarded their minutes to you is just so that everyone on the Select Board got a sense of how thorough the Finance Committee is. Really, they leave no stone unturned.
That's exactly.
They're doing very well.
Yeah, and that's exactly the reason why I said what I said. It's like, that's great. I mean, so, we just got to make sure that we embrace that.
Yeah.
Trust their guidance.
Matt, about two seconds ago, we got the approved Hampshire Regional Budget with a 1.13% increase, I think. Is that right, 1.13? And they're using a lot of the excess and deficiency. Do you want to talk about the schools?
Yeah, so, I'm happy to do that. So, I expressed this the last time. I remain, you know, depending on what happens here in the next election cycle and everything else, I mean, this is the, this is always the, hate to use the word, but this is the game, right? I mean, they're using a lot of excess and deficiency. The, I am confident, and I don't mean that as a criticism, they're using a lot of excess and deficiency. What they're using the excess and deficiency on are, is not to prop their budget up. It is one-time purchases. But what we do need to make sure is, in the next year, when we're going through this budget process, so one year from today, that we remember that, because this is building up basis. So, while we're only recognizing a 1.13% increase this year, if we realize the entire basis of which they're increasing based off their E and D spend, it's over 4%. I mean, and so, to absorb that basis, we would have to absorb that basis next year and then do two and a half. I mean, it's just, it would eat up everything. I mean, next year would be an atrocious budget year if we don't realize what they're doing with their budget and then hold them accountable to it. Now, what they've committed to doing is they're using E and D right now for the obvious reasons of COVID, and they have good explanations for this, and I actually do support their budget. So, I do support their budget. I do support the 1.13 increase for our town this year. But with that being said, the E and Ds that they're using to do these one-time, to take care of these one-time issues and to not support like a salaried position or to support extra positions, they are literally like one-time purchases. We just need to make sure that those get completely backed out yet next year and not just moved around or massaged in any way that, you know. And again, like, and when I coined the term "game," I mean, this board presumably will change over a little bit, and so like you can lose some things in the mix here, and I would hate to see that happen. So, I'm in support of their budget. I think they've done a really good job of doing their due diligence. I'm happy that, I think it's like $40,000 or $50,000.
$60.
Yep, to the town, which leaves us some room to be able to take care of some other departments in town that we need to take care of. And obviously, we do need to do that based on what we had to do last year. So, to a certain degree, we need to restore difficult decisions that we made last year. So, that's all I really have to say about Hampshire, aside from...
I have something about Hampshire, Matt, before you go on. Last year, they used capital, they put some money into capital and then came in with a budget that was less than two and a half or right at two and a half. This year, they're using the accumulated excess and deficiency. So, on a level, I appreciate the creativity. On another level, it's all taxpayer money.
Yep, it is. It is. Yep, there's no question. And I do have a watchful eye on this. I will say this. So, we, the superintendent interview process is going well. I'm on that. I can't speak in grave detail about this, but I've gotten a lot of interest, so we'll have a lot of candidates to go through. One of my big things being on this is budget process and how the middle high school is handled in relation to all of the elementary schools. I'd like to see that tightened up. I'd like to actually see that, personally, I'd like to see all of those budgets being done at the same time and not middle high school being done first ahead of all of the elementary schools. I think that everything should be done at once. I realize that this will tax the business manager, whoever that might be, to a high degree. But honestly, like, you know, doing the middle high school first intrinsically gives the middle high school priority over all of the elementary schools. And I'm not just speaking for Southampton. It's all of the five towns, frankly, that have to bear the burden of the decisions that the middle high school makes, and I think that it should be collective budgeting from all of the schools. So, I think that they should all be sitting in a room together, figuring out their budgets and figuring out their priorities together, rather than the middle high school going first and then the elementary schools having to deal with the scraps. So, I'm going to be pushing for that in our interviews, and I'm going to be posing that as a question, and we'll see how they answer these things.
Anything else you want to say about the local school? I'm just trying to keep us on track, because at 6:30, we have the presentation, and I don't, I'm hoping we can get through all the reports before then.
Yep. I don't have a report from Norris. I was on vacation last week, and I did what I needed to do, which was check out, because I really needed to do that. So, I did not go to any meetings last week and took some time with the family. So, I don't have a report from Norris.
Okey-dokey. Chris, you want to talk about your committees?
Sure. The Board of Assessors just met just recently, right before this meeting, and basically, it was a little bit of a recap. They were the first ones to present their proposed budget to the Finance Committee last night, so they kind of did a little bit of a review of how that went and, you know, had some ideas about that. So, hopefully, you know, that went good enough, and if we need to answer questions from FinCom, we can certainly plan to do that. Otherwise, there'll be some motor vehicle excise abatements probably coming up down the line. Oops, excuse me. Let me turn off my phone. The other big one is probably CONCOM. They haven't met since we met last, but they are meeting on Monday. And the biggest thing on the agenda for them, or one of the biggest worries right now is to be able to get, as we've talked about before, to be able to get the bidding process going on the Manhattan Trails, sorry, the Manhattan Sanctuary project, so that the various people that are going to bid on it, the companies that are going to bid on it, don't get their calendars all filled up already for the year and that we've got a chance to get some qualified people to come and do the trail work that's necessary through the Mass Trails Grant. It's really important, too, because I think there's a deadline, if I'm not mistaken, mid-March is a deadline coming up for a progress report, and we want to be able to give them something in terms of the movement on this first half of the grant that we, or the grant that we received. But as you remember, it's part one of two different grants. They've applied for a second grant for Mass Trails for the replacement of the bridge over the Manhand, and then there is also another Mass Trails grant at the Greenway, and Grants Committee have worked on together. So, we don't want anything to jeopardize our chances on that. So, we really would hope that we can make that a priority in the coming week to get that bidding process started. That's basically it for those two committees that I'm focused on at the moment. And grants come, I'll just add, right now, we're meeting on next week. And to talk further about the one-stop grant process that I mentioned last week, we've invited a couple folks from Water and Highway and Planning and Housing to come and join us if they've got some ideas for projects to basically pitch an idea, concept to the folks in Boston. There's a whole month during the month of March to be able to pitch concepts before we have to actually decide on a project and actually apply. So, I'm hoping we can facilitate a conversation among the heads of those three or four departments to see what ideas we might have for some bigger projects related to Mass Work.
That's a really good idea.
That's it. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, I have a couple things. So, the Board of Health met last week. Obviously, the big topic is COVID and the vaccine availability. I was able to make an appointment for Thursday for my husband for the vaccines. So, thankfully, North Hampton is a place where they're, I had to refresh like five different websites. But nonetheless, everybody, you know, a lot more people are getting appointments. It's still a problem, though. They also voted in favor of joining with the Select Board in a moratorium on door-to-door solicitation until the governor releases the emergency pandemic period that we're in. So, that is on the agenda for later tonight. They did have a meeting with the School Committee to just kind of iron out some communication case tracing issues, the usual Health Director and Agent Report. They discussed the FY '22 budget, and I just saw that they posted a meeting for 8:15 PM on Thursday night to approve the FY '22 budget. Just want to say thank you to Caitlin Swistak-Rooks, who is behind the scenes, you know, doing what she can to help with getting the word out about vaccines and so forth. Also, I want to be sure to thank people from the Council on Aging, who have also been working very hard to try to get appointments for people. They were working very hard on the 75-plus until the floodgates opened up for the 65-plus, but nonetheless, did a lot of work to try to reach out to people and help schedule appointments. And the COA also is talking about the FY '22 budget, and they are presenting in front of the Finance Committee tomorrow at 5:30. Open Space Review Committee, they had, we had a short meeting a couple of weeks ago. Meeting again this Thursday at 6:00. Good news is, a couple of minutes ago, just got notification from Cindy Palmer that we were awarded the Neighborhood Outreach Project Grant again, and that'll be for some more community, excuse me, education around conservation. Besides that, they are, you know, basically looking at continuing the mapping project of looking at preferred parcels in town based on various criteria, particularly looking at Palmory Mountain area. They also are putting forth a project in front of the CPC to educate the community on the protection of the Barnes Aquaphor. And I think that's it. Any questions? Then, Ed, would you like to do your report?
Sure. I can do mine probably pretty quickly, because actually, most of the stuff I've got in it, I can do under Agenda Items. So, let's see. Just let you know that our county custodians returned to work this week at the Town Hall, Police Station, and the Library. He'll be on light duty as far as lifting goes, a 10-pound limit for about three to four weeks, but he's performing all of his normal duties. Everyone is glad to have David back, and the departments have reported that the cleaning company we had used in the interim did a very good job. Let's see. And then, I did meet with our Maya Risk Analysis Representative, and due to some very high workers' compensation claims in the last year, our workers' compensation insurance will be increasing 44% for fiscal year '22. This is about a $20,000 additional cost for the upcoming fiscal year. And our general insurance and liability insurance will be going up about $7,700 for fiscal year '22, mainly due to property value increases on our buildings and new vehicles and equipment coming on the rolls, replacing some older equipment. And everything else I can do as Agenda Items. Our upcoming Select Board meetings for March are the 9th and the 23rd.
Any questions for Ed? Okay. We had put the presentation with the Historical Commission on the envelope study of the Old Town Hall for actually 6:30. So, just to be consistent with that, if people don't mind, we'll just, just in case there are people that wanted to join that were thinking it was at 6:30. If you don't mind, just waiting a little bit, we'll just try to do a couple of other Agenda Items. Is everybody okay with that? The next item is about the Town Caucus. So, last Select Board meeting, we voted in favor of requesting special legislation to cancel the caucus this year because of the pandemic, but we didn't really make any decision in about subsequent years. That language was, is currently with our attorney. Ed, is there any update on that?
On that one, there is not.
Okay. And then, Lucy, you had asked that we put this back on the agenda for discussion again?
Yeah.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah. I would like to speak to that. In January, I had sent a message to you all asking if, you know, we could talk about eliminating the caucus. I realized that if we wanted to eliminate it from the process, it would have to go to town meeting. So, I had thought about it for this year due to COVID. But I had talked to a lot of town clerks before, while I was out sick for, in two weeks in January, oh, February, and when I came back, I found out that you had voted on it to cancel it. I was not notified that you voted to cancel it at that meeting.
Lucy, you're the one that asked us to discuss it and vote on it. You're the one that asked us to have a special, to discuss it and put forth special legislation. So, that's exactly what we did.
Can I finish speaking? I said, I had spoken to Maureen. I have the email, and you said that you would like to discuss it further, because it would be, you'd like to hear the towns, you know, you'd like the town to chime in. So, while I was sick for two weeks with COVID, I thought about it, and I was checking my email every single day, and I realized that the caucus is important to the town. And I had other suggestions from other town clerks. I thought that when you were going to discuss it at the town, at your meeting, that you were going to discuss some suggestions on how we could do it safely or cancel it altogether. I did not ask to vote on it that night. Therefore, I was out sick. I had thought about it and said that this is an important part of the process, and we should have it, and we should have it in a safe manner, like we did the elections and the town meetings. And that is why I said...
We canceled it last year because of COVID, and my comment about cancel, getting the town involved is the town residents and town meeting has to vote to cancel the caucus altogether. They vote by the Select Board to send it to...
The voters.
Select Board had voted on it, and then we sent it to our attorney. So, we're paying money for our attorney to draft language. In the meantime, you write to Lindsay Sabadosa about it, and then also to our attorney.
Right, because I had gotten no information from anyone that you had voted on it and that you had sent to somebody.
All right, so timeout. I mean, for me personally, this discussion is going nowhere, because I, based on my optic on the Town Caucus, I do still want to send this to the voters. Now, whether or not it goes anywhere or not, I think the town vote, I think the voters still need to decide on this. I do still stand by my position on this.
After this year, Matt, the caucus happens before the election, the town meeting.
Guys, if I recall, what we voted, or what we agreed on last meeting was that we were not going to recommend the caucus this year because of COVID, just like last year, and we were asking for the special legislation, just like last year, and that was the first step. But we did not vote to cancel it forever. We did say we were going to put it on the warrant for the May Town Meeting to let the voters decide if they wanted to continue the process of a caucus or not.
Right, exactly. But I want...
The only thing we've done is move toward special legislation to not have it this year because of COVID, just like last year.
But the reason why I, but the reason why I had thought about it while I was sick, I thought, we have to give the voters, the residents of this town, the opportunity to run for offices, and if they don't feel comfortable getting signatures, then we could possibly do it in a safe manner where they can come to the caucus and get voted, nominated on the floor. Because we're asking people to get nomination papers, which they are doing. But, you know, people are coming and getting them, but there's also the process of the caucus where they can get nominated on the floor.
And we have to have a quorum of 25 people.
That's ludicrous.
Right.
Exactly.
I spoke to you about that, but hopefully, in March, the governor is going to open up the gathering restrictions to more than 25. I mean, how are we going to have a town, how are we going to have a town meeting again?
You know, we had a town meeting successfully. We thought that the caucus, similarly to last year, could easily be canceled. We don't have the opportunity of voters to vote in favor of the caucus this year. You had suggested we meet and that we ask for special legislation. We did that. We voted. It's in the hands of the attorneys, and then you change your mind, and then you reach out to Lindsay Sabadosa and independently reach out to our attorney and before coming to the Select Board. So, I just, what do people want to do?
Well, I would like to...
I was going to ask the Select Board, what do you want to do? I mean, right now...
I want to continue with what we did.
Okay.
That's what I want to do.
Okay. There's four other members on the board.
If through the legislation, you know, it's determined that this is not needed because the governor is going to open up, I'm sure that they would tell us that, right? So, I mean, at the first time...
But it's a timing, also. It's a timing, if possible.
But at some point, we have to be able to make a decision and move forward with other things. And given the myriad of things facing us, I, you know, moving ahead with people getting their nomination papers and not doing a caucus doesn't seem to me as important as trying to get a good town meeting going and getting people out there. So, I'm still okay with just, you know, not doing the caucus this year and letting people come and get their papers, even if we had to extend, if we can, if we could extend even the deadline for people to turn in their signed papers. But if we...
Or reduction in the number of signatures, as we did last year. Francine, do you want to chime in?
Yeah, I was going to say, one of the special conditions last year was that they only needed to get 10 signatures rather than the usual amount, just simply because we wanted to limit the amount of people that people might potentially be exposed to.
And that was only the Acts of 2020. And we were told, all the town clerks in every municipality, that the Acts of 2020 would not be included in 2021. There's no...
You have to go for special legislation again, which is what we, I guess, voted to do last time. And it sounds like the other three people on the board, including myself, are also in the same vote. So, I think we'll just move on from this. It sounds like we're interested in having it stay as it stands and let the voters decide if they want to go for a caucus in the future, if that's still a request of you, Lucy, and also the Select Board. If people, you know, I wasn't at all thinking about future. I was thinking about, this year, we're still in the middle of a pandemic.
Right. We can't think anything about the next year's. That has to be chosen, voted on by the town clerk.
Right. And Ed, Lindsay Sabadosa did say that she wants to have this information as soon as possible. So, if you could get the information from, the language from KP Law, we need to move that as soon as possible, even possibly... move that as soon as possible, even possibly putting it on the agenda for next Tuesday as a solo item. Okay?
Okay. So you want to do special legislation to do away with the caucus for this year only?
Can I just ask?
That's what we voted last select board meeting, Ed.
Can I just ask, I informed that you voted on that? I mean, I would.
These, 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 these meetings are broadcast. The live and retroactively, I mean, they're recorded, you could go back and look at it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I can tell you, I have gone back to a recording from January 26th and my, me speaking on the meeting was removed. It was edited.
Oh, well, that, I wasn't, we can certainly look into that. I didn't know that. Lucy, you were the one that asked us to address the special legislation. So we're going to move on and we're going to go back now that it's six thirty and we're going to introduce.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yep, thank you, Reinhardt.
Jamie Reinhardt's here for, for Hill Engineers.
Okay. Did you say he is here?
Yes.
He needs to be unmuted.
Kind of unmute.
You gotta unmute yourself, Jamie.
Before we start, I'm just wondering if there's any other committee here that wants to take a moment and open up their meeting. Do you have a quorum? Either the historical commission?
Historical commission, I believe. I mean, let's see, the Warrens are online, right?
I saw, I saw Dawn there. Yep.
Yeah, and Ingrid. Doric, I think Doric is online. So we have a quorum. So I will open up the meeting of the historical joint meeting between historical commission and select board.
Yep. And Christina Madsen is also online.
Okay, we're good.
So it's six thirty-two. Thank you. And is Jamie unmuted and present?
He's unmuted, but I can't hear him.
It's got to be your volume, volume.
That's a microphone problem.
Yeah.
Volume's not going to help that.
Yep.
While we're waiting, I just wanted to also mention that Chief, Police Chief Ellingsworth is here also, and so is Ron Lauren, our building inspector. So thank you all for being here.
Sir, you might do better to, if you can hear us, log out and log back in. And when you log back in, select use computer audio. Just a suggestion. We definitely can't hear you, so. We'll see if that works.
Did everybody on the call get a copy of the report?
Yes.
All hundred pages.
Yeah.
It was actually fascinating. I thought it was fascinating.
And then who's ever in control of this meeting is looking for him to come back, right?
Ed, is he there yet?
Yeah.
Can I just use this time to ask a question?
Sure.
Recently, I received, or the commission received a donation from a local resident of a very nice multi-page wall map, which came out of the Larrabee School when Larrabee School was closed. His intention was that we put it at the schoolhouse, but I'm questioning whether enough people would see it there. It is actually very, very nice. And I wonder whether you might consider putting it somewhere in the hall.
Oh, that's, yeah, where is it now?
I'm sorry?
Where's the map now?
I have it here. I can, I can drop it off at town hall and you guys can have a look at it. It is very, very nice.
Well, either that or you might try using the video.
Is it a map of the town?
No, no, no. It's a, it's a United States map. And the multi, the multi-pages are at various times in our history.
Oh.
Civil War, Red War, at various times in our history. So it's, it is very, very colorful.
How big is the map?
Roughly, I'm going to say four feet by five feet.
Oh, wow.
I'll drop it off. You can, you can decide. You can decide. If it doesn't go there, it'll go in the schoolhouse.
Okay. I was thinking either, you know, either there or the library or, you know, the school. That's nice.
Can you hear me? This is Christina.
Hi, Christina. I can hear you.
Okay, because I, you weren't able to hear me before. I was just wanting to inquire whether you see that my sister Andrea Gilmore has logged in?
Uh, let's see.
Yes.
No, no, I don't.
Yeah, she's on. She's.
Oh, yeah, I do see her.
Yeah, she's on. She's on.
She just joined a few minutes ago.
Hi, Andrea.
Ah, yes, I did just join a couple of minutes ago. Thank you.
Bye, Andrea.
And is, is still having audio problems there?
Yeah, I'm having him try using his video and then call in on the phone for the audio.
Right after this, we have the ad hoc technology committee presenting?
Yeah, right. Maybe we should have reversed order.
Maybe you start with them. Everybody, yes.
I mean, I mean, do we want to start with him? Because I think he's a big piece of the puzzle here and there's clearly audio problems. So I don't know if we need to provide him a call-in number so that he doesn't do it.
I just did.
Yeah, he's trying to, he's trying to call in.
He's going to need it. He's going to need the meeting number and the password. There's going to be both probably for this. That's.
He put his thumbs up, so he has some.
Okay, but the problem is you're going to need a speaker, Ed, for him.
No, 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 no. He should be able to call directly into the meeting.
No, no, he's signaling. He can hear us. He can hear us, but we can't hear him.
Right. Yeah, we can't hear you.
So the meeting ID, meeting ID, Jamie, is eight, six, four. Nine, one, five, seven. Eight, one, six, seven. And then it'll ask you for a password, which is two, eight, eight, nine, nine, three.
Oh, man.
This, this isn't going to work. So we should, you know, I don't know what to do here, but I think we should move on.
Yeah. Okay. I think we'll have to work on that. I don't know, Ed.
Yeah, if he gets in before, we'll, we'll just.
Yeah.
When he gets on.
Maybe Ed, Ed, you and Jamie could work on, on trying to still fix this and we'll go on to the other crew and come back.
Want to try the iPad, Jamie?
Okay, Ed, all right, if we move on and have the technology committee speak.
Yes.
All right, you folks want to, do you want to, do you want to start your meeting, the technology group?
I can hear me?
Dan and Art?
Yeah, let's, let's adjourn the meeting of the ad hoc technology committee. We have, might just be myself and Art, but.
Okay.
Either way.
Okay.
You're not, you're not adjourning, Dan. You're calling it to order, no?
Sorry. It's been a long day for me. I wish I was adjourning.
I think we'll hear what you have to say first.
All right, thanks, Dan, for being here. And Art?
I have a PowerPoint and I was hoping to share it. Is that possible?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Awesome. So, one moment, my screen should pop up?
Yep, you see it.
Okay. Okay, sweetie, thank you. Sorry, as always, my daughter needed a ruler. So really, the, the purpose of this presentation is to kind of give a quarterly update where the ad hoc technology committee is at, where we're at with the CARES Act laptops and where we're headed towards sort of our, where, at least from now, from, starting now, what our long-term vision is. So. Next slide. So objectives, we, to, to begin this whole process, we, we, we were lucky enough having our Lawrence on the, the committee. He, he had a lot of knowledge, a lot of internal knowledge of some of the history and, and issues that the town's technology runs into on a daily basis. So he's really was able to help us identify some of those areas of, of, of risk and, and trouble. So we, we went through and categorized all those and, and he came up with, with ways to, to mitigate it. And again, we also want to talk a little bit about the, the laptops because there are, as you may all know in this meeting, there are thirteen mobile laptops that have been purchased for the, the townspeople, the employees of the town, the idea being a laptop in the event of things like COVID, they would be able to work remotely with those devices so they're not, they're not, you know, tied to a desktop machine. But, you know, that is, that is no trivial task and there's some costs involved. And making those, those mobile devices and having that, that, that network be able to be used remotely has, has some additional costs associated with it. So we'll talk a little bit about that. So our upgrade objectives, we want, help us help you. So, I mean, the, the idea of this eventually will be a, a request for, obviously, the ad hoc technology committee doesn't have a budget of its own, so we're, we would be requesting funds. So why, why would we be doing this? Well, we want to be able to ensure the, the town leaders have their crucial capabilities and can have that corporate continuity when, when there are issues and when, when you have to work distributedly and say you all can't be located in the town hall or you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes. Would you like me to continue?
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Dan. Okay. Looks like we're ready, ready to go when you're ready after. Okay, keep going.
Okay.
Okay, I'll hang up, Ed.
All right. So ensuring corporate.
Jamie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
We're going to go, keep going with the technology committee, okay?
So.
Technology committee's there and then you're set to go, Jamie.
When you're ready. I'm sitting tight.
At least we can hear you now.
Good.
Okay. So, oh, some of the concerns we've heard about the town's computing is the network or the email capability. The email system has been brought up a couple of times by different, different people as being a sore point or a sight of, of pain. So we want, one of the things we look at in, in this improvement is how can we improve the email system for all the users, not just the ones that we receive on the laptops. We also, we're looking at how, how the town is securing its digital data, how it's, how it's backing up that data, how it's protecting it so it is, it is available i- in the event of a, of, of a computer crashing. You, you make sure we have things that are secure and backed up at a remote location. And also remote collaboration. There's a number of sites around town, you know, like we say, we're lucky enough to be joined by the chief tonight and, you know, he, he has computers at his site. The highway department has computers at their site, their computers at town hall, obviously, and the library. And so there's all these computers that we'll call those remote sites, right? They're all not, there's no direct connection between those sites. So we wanted to think of ways that we can better, encourage better collaboration between those, those sites. There's also some, some monthly expenditures that we, that we spend now that we, that we may not know, you may not wholly think about. Like, right now, we pay for Zoom. I know that on some of the boards I'm on, they, they pay for their own backup service for their data to make sure that their data is protected. So in, I have all these, these little act, little groups or little committees acting and, and paying for individual services where if we think of it from a larger perspective, as a town perspective, we ensure that it's being done until we get a better cost for it. So in town use computers, they're not all being backed up. They provide no mobility. Again, if the issue comes down to we have to close a building or access to a building, how can the town still function? We want to make sure that, that, you know, the vulnerability and, and accessibility in capability of the town is ensured so that we can operate no matter what. And also protecting sensitive data that may not be as safely secured as it shouldn't. Okay, so, for example, working remotely, normal travel, emergency pandemics, maintaining that capability and continuity. So. But with no mobile devices means that the teams, they have no means for communication when in a remote posture. So obviously, when your teams are, are trying to work, like, I, I know many of you may be or have experienced the, the corporate environment and how it's changed in 2020. Because of COVID, it's, there's been large strides in terms of the technologies available for remote work. And we, we would be incorporating a lot of those, those capabilities with what we're proposing to this upgrade. So, yeah, again, about the, the email, email access is flaky, someone said, and unreliable. So I guess this kind of gets into what we're, what, what we arrived at or what solution we, we as a technology, ad hoc technology committee are proposing. We looked at a lot of different options and we arrived at Microsoft three sixty-five because it provides, by, by purchasing their, their, their subscription, it provides a lot of the capability, capabilities that are missing in the town. You know, it provides the ability to have all the data stored in the cloud, to have a, a different email server that's hosted through, through Microsoft, to assure the laptops are protected through Azure. Say if a laptop were stolen, we could immediately lock, lock that laptop down and, and protect the data on it. And again, all that data is also backed up to the cloud. In tune is really good for, we can make sure that it, long-term, those computers are being kept up to date and have the latest software. So when people are, when the users of the computer are running into issues, the cost of, of support for the, and maintenance of those laptops is, is lower. And it's also Microsoft, which is the products that most of the town users are used to, like, so they were still. Like, so they would still have their Outlook and their Word and their Excel. It just adds capabilities on top of that for remote use, uh, through things like Microsoft Teams, which would allow with, uh, groups to use thing, their equivalent to Zoom and, uh, organization of data through Teams. So it has, it brings a lot of capabilities to the towns that we currently don't have and fixes a lot of the, the issues that, that we have identified. So that's really the, the, the path that we, we feel is best, the, the solution is best suited to, uh, achieve the results the town is looking for. So, how, what would that look like or, well, what's next? So we, we wanted to put together a little, a little timeline or, uh, what, what, what would be the, the plan, uh, for, for doing all of this? So we, we have those laptops, we could, we could deploy them now in the way they are. They wouldn't have, they would have the same capabilities they have, not having any of the remote access, remote capabilities, but they would, you know, be faster and better. So that's something that we can, we can do to get those laptops out so that, one, it achieves, um, just the ability of working remotely, but the data exchange isn't, isn't ideal because it's not, uh, sent to the cloud first and you have to use other means for data transfer. So really, we're looking for, to, to begin this, this appro, uh, approval process and working to get RFPs from three or four, um, IT solution providers, um, for rolling out Microsoft three sixty-five to the computing systems in Southampton such that the, the, this service would be available to, to, um, uh, all the town's employees. And then distributing that when, after, after we've chosen the, the, the best quality per price, um, rolling that out and then looking, looking to see what their continued support model is. So really, that's kind of what we've done for the past quarter. Um, we've, we kind of have evaluated the problem. Uh, we looked for what, what the, uh, optimal solution is. We, we identify that that, uh, optimal solution comes with, will, will come with a cost. That, that cost really is an infrastructure cost that, that most businesses and institutions, uh, uh, pay these days to have those capabilities that they want, like, to be, be able to ensure their data is protected, to be able to communicate, collaborate no matter where they're located, uh, to be able to work remotely, to have these Zoom meetings, which would be included in, in that, so. So I think that's, that's really where we're at right now. We wanna, we wanna, we wanna help and that's our advice for helping, um, mitigate the risk we see. Uh, we see this will help you work smarter, we believe, because you'll be able to share files more easily and safer because your data will be backed up. And, uh, really, that's all I have to say at this point in time.
Dan, yeah, thank you very much for, uh, that. I'm just wondering before we ask, um, what kind of questions people have if, um, Art, I'm just wondering if you wanted to add anything to that?
No, I think Dan pretty much, uh, covered it. That's, uh, where we're heading.
Okay, uh, questions from the select board at all?
Yeah, just a couple, just to clarify. Dan, I think when you talk about team leaders, you're talking about the department heads. Um, the thirteen laptops that were purchased through the CARES Act are for the department heads. Uh, and so you're looking at migrating to Microsoft three sixty-five, which, if I'm understanding correctly, would replace the Bluehost server that we're using now out in Utah, which is part of our crazy email issues with the town of Southampton email address, is that right?
Dan, we can't hear you.
Dan? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, uh, right. So this is a plan to replace the, the Bluehost, uh, computing, uh, such that it would eliminate the issues that you are seeing, uh, at this point in time with your email as well as, uh, looking into the, the web service provider, um, solution. Because we also have, have noted or have heard, heard notes that there may be, um, at times, issues with the website loading.
Okay, I don't know about that, but, and then there's also then, there would be the desktops for those that are not getting laptops. The desktops would also be converted over to the same exchange, right? So that's what you're talking about on this slide, okay? I just wanted to be sure that we're all on the same page there.
Right, you, you don't have to upgrade all the hardware at once, you know, this, this upgrades the software that runs on the hardware. Eventually, you know, we want to get into a replacement cycle for hardware. You may already be in one, we, it's something we can talk about. Um, and at, at some point, you're considering moving i- i- more people towards laptops such that, you know, if you run into offices, I know we have, at least at my work, we've had areas of the building that have had infections of, say, say, say another, say another disease like COVID were to come along that you're prepared for.
Oh, God.
Right, right, just because you want to be prepared, right? So, we've had to, you know, make everybody in the whole department work remotely. So this, this would allow, you know, if you upgrade computers over time or start replacing desktop computers with more laptop-based computers who have that capability.
Right, although, you know, eventually, hopefully, COVID is gonna go away and we're all gonna be back to working in town hall because, you know, our, our town employees are providing a service to our residents. So the goal is to be present eventually and, and be able to, to provide the services we need. But yes, we definitely have times when people would need to work remotely. And I, I know you know already the, the various software issues that you've got, you know, very specific software, um, from treasurer to assessor to whomever, um, so those are things you're looking at. I guess one of the things as you think about budgeting for me would be taking a look, if this is your, your figure of forty-eight hundred, how we balance that with what the cost savings is by getting rid of whatever we're getting rid of, whatever it's replacing, what is our, what is our net, um, result? I guess that's my biggest question on this whole thing.
Yeah, I think that's what, this, you know, as, as we investigated more, like I said, you know, we're, we're only in the, this is sort of our first, first, uh, response, right? And there, we wanted, we wanted to get your initial take on it and understand what, where, where you want more answers. And I, I think that's really so, one area that you'd want to know more about is what, the, what gives and the takes, right?
Could, could I ask, um, you, you're saying going forward annually, it's gonna be at least forty-eight hundred dollars? Now, you're talking about issuing an IRFP. Now, is the cost of that part of the forty-eight hundred dollars? I mean, for whatever service those respondents are gonna provide? Or that's in addition to?
The program, uh, uh, from Microsoft is a fixed fee, so no matter who does the installation and ma- maintenance of it, they're really going to be charging the same cost. There's, there's no, I mean, we can, we can go on Microsoft's website and look up the cost, so they, they can't really mark it up. Um, so if they, we can either say, include the cost in your RFP, so it's one number, or we'll add it on the side for how many they would do it, do in the install. It's, 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 it, it doesn't change their out, uh, the, the comparison between multiple, uh, quotes.
Okay, but, but what would be the cost per unit that you say is, is fixed by Microsoft?
Right, so they're, they're, they're charging, say, twenty dollars per user per month, so every computer would cost.
It's part of the, this is part, that RFP is to just get a provider and it all rolls into the forty-eight hundred?
The RFP is to get a tech, a technology company, say, I, I won't name a technology company, some technology company to, uh, spend time in town to install all and do this upgrade from where we are now to Microsoft three sixty-five and ensure that all the capabilities are working and everything's con- connected together. They've migrated the emails over, they've done that e- email migration from the old computer to the new computer to the, to the new ser, uh, exchange servers.
But, but that's all for the sixteen eighty.
The sixteen eighty.
You're saying, so, I, that's what I'm asking, is what you're, the service that you're asking to be bid on through this RFP process, is that part of the forty-eight hundred dollars or is that in addition to the forty-eight hundred?
It's in, it, it's in addition to the forty-eight hundred. This is just the, the, um, the annual cost.
This is just the base cost, yes.
Okay, so, do you have any idea what the, uh, you know, what the cost might be?
We hadn't, we haven't gone out and, and gotten quotes or any quotes, so we don't have an estimate of that number yet and no one was willing to, to give us a, uh, a ROM. So, I, I don't have that number right now and, and I think, you know, that, that's something I can, I can get before you say, continue the process or not.
Dan, can I ask a question? I mean, Maureen, can I ask a question? Actually, Art Lawrence is trying to say something. Lucy, can you hold on one second?
Yeah, 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 yep, no problem.
Just, um, Francine, just to sort of expand this a little bit, there's a, we, we, as you know, we use, uh, a, a number of third-party, uh, uh, software packages in town, uh, you know, the, the treasurer's office, uh, at least three, and, uh, accounting has, uh, another package, um, we have a package in, uh, the building department. Um, so all this is sort of, it's gonna have to be integrated, uh, into this whole scheme. And, uh, th- this is not trivial stuff, um, you know, this is, uh, to be able to share and so on and so forth. So, the cost, uh, i- is gonna be certainly greater than forty-eight hundred. Like Dan said, until we get the, uh, the specs out, which, uh, people are working on and, and get the, uh, inputs from, uh, at least three, yeah, providers, uh, we're really not sure. And if we have to, maybe we have to do this over time, we hate to do that, but, um, on the other hand, the good news is that we do have stuff working today. So, um, this could be worked on, uh, on, on, on the side. And then when it's ready to go, it could be integrated in, so, uh, the cost is gonna be probably considerably more than forty-eight hundred.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ask, uh, Matt Rowland if you had any other questions for, um, Art or Dan?
No, I, and I'm thrilled with your guys' work and Art, I know this has been a long time coming for you, so, um, thank you for all the work that you've done on this. Um, I think, you know, from my perspective, uh, this is a small cost to shore these up. The subscription model is absolutely the way to go. They take care of the software. This is the way, I mean, honestly, huge companies are going this way. Um, my company for one has gone entirely on the E, E three sixty-five route. It just takes a ton of the legwork, the time, the management, the updates, the, the protocols completely out of our hands. All we need to have is a robust internet signal and all this stuff is going to work just fine. Um, things stay up to date a lot easier. I, I think this is the wave of the future. It's been around for a number of years. This is, this is where we gotta go, yeah. And I think it's a small cost, is my opinion on this. I think the amount of time that it frees up an administrator like Ed, I mean, Art clearly pulled, uh, all of his hair out doing this when he was here as a volunteer. I know that he was frustrated by it. I'm, I'm speaking for him. Uh, he's, he's not the type of guy that would vent these types of frustrations, but, like, let's take care of this for the nominal sum of money that it is and, uh, I think a lot of our problems go away.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I totally support, uh, this whole process. The only question I have is, do we have to wait till the summer, uh, and early fall to roll out the laptops? Is there any value in, um, for example, I was under the understanding that some of the people don't have a camera or a desktop, so therefore they can't join Zoom meetings? Is there any value in, uh, rolling them out for other purposes, uh, and then, uh, once the money is available to actually upgrade them all to, uh, Microsoft three sixty-five?
Uh, yes, I, I, I absolutely, I, I agree with you. We talked about that during our last meeting or, uh, that was something that we discussed, is, is getting those laptops out because there, uh, there's benefit uh, in, in exactly what you said, getting the laptops out to them with the capabilities that they have now and then adding to those capabilities later. So we wanted, we wanted to make an image of those laptops as they are today. So, we had, we had borrowed one of the laptops and we, we backed it up so that we can get that laptop back to its original state for, say, when we go to make, roll out, do this full, uh, a larger rollout that we could be starting from a clean slate with lap, those laptops. So at least we have a, we have a backup of what those laptops had, had shipped with. So, we, 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 and, and Ed was talking with Wally, uh, I believe this week about what they had provided when we purchased those laptops in terms of their initial installation because they had, in that cost, they had included some, some initials, um, uh, basic setup, uh, uh, in their, in their cost of the laptop, so.
Do you have a question?
Oh, I was, I was just gonna ask, would they be compatible with all our printers? Cause each of us departments have different printers, so, I mean, I can probably email you that and ask you that, so we're not holding up the meeting.
You, you won't have any problems.
Okay, great, thank you.
There's all the problems with printers, but, uh, we should build an end of that without too much going.
All right, great, thank you.
You, you got the Art Lawrence seal of approval on that.
I know.
I just installed, uh, a printer myself and if, uh, if, if Janet Kane's on, uh, it, it just happens to be a cannon.
It does sound like there's, you know, general support from the select board in terms of, like, uh, the funding of it, whether this go, uh, a report is written up for the finance committee or we're looking at grant funding or CARES Act funding. I think that the bottom line is, I'm hearing a lot of support for this, um, uh, moving forward. Um, is there anything more that you'd like to hear from us, um, Art or Dan?
I'll let Art go first.
No, I'm all, I'm all set, uh, I think we, uh, we thank you, uh, we have a direction and that's, that's a good thing.
Good.
Yeah, really, I echo what Art's saying. It's, that, that was kind of the purp- purpose of this first meeting. We hadn't had an opportunity since we first established this ad hoc committee to, to speak with you all, um, as a committee, to show you where we, what, what have we been up to? What, what, what directions are we heading? So this, I think, was a good for, uh, chance to get, just catch up and show you where, where we're at, so.
Yeah, all right, well, thank you both very much. Really appreciate your coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're, uh, ready to move into the, uh, presentation, uh, by Jamie, can you?
Yes, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Technology's wonderful when it works.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, so welcome to the meeting. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Um, well, as I'm hoping everyone's aware, Hill was hired to prepare two different reports for the, um, the police station, the former town hall. Uh, one report was to prepare an evaluation and report on, uh, building code-related issues and accessibility. Um, there are some issues, um, but they aren't significant. Um, I don't know if the building commissioner is on board with this meeting or not, but as long as there are no, um, substantive, substantive changes to the building, you continue to use the building. Um, the work that was done there is assumed to comply with building code. Um, there are some deficiencies relative to our modern code, the ninth edition that we follow now. I don't know if people have copies of the report, um, if people are, people want to follow along or just touch lightly on the first report and maybe focus on the building envelope, which was a separate, a separate report. Um, accessibility in the building is a bit of an issue. Um, accessibility as it compli- complies with the market, uh, the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, um, and only accessible places are required to be, or, or public places are required to be accessible. So as long as the public is not in the building, um, you don't have to provide the accessibility services. I do know that they do have, you know, members of the public that, that do come in, um, most likely on the first floor or the, the upper level. I don't know what your Navy convention may be. Um, but the upper floor has the ramp out front and the steps. Um, all the spaces. Um, all the spaces on that floor are on the same level, easily accessible. Uh, um, the one deficiency there is that there's no accessible toilet. Um, so that if someone from the general public were there, they didn't have, they don't have use of an accessible toilet. The two toilets that are there right now are very small and narrow and difficult to negotiate. Um, the, um, the front ramp is in disrepair. Um, it is out of compliance with the slope for a ramp. It is a little bit on the steep side. Um, so if work is done in the front to replace it, obviously it, the work would be done to comply with modern, modern requirements of a one and twelve slope. Um, the lower level seems to be predominantly the, um, um, the operations center, the command center, the cells. There are complications down there because there is a significant step between the two buildings where the nineteen sixty building was added onto the back of the nineteen oh four structure. Um, even a, a grab bar was added to assist with, you know, the elevation change. Um, it works, um, but I certainly wouldn't entertain anyone from the public to go past the vestibule area. Um, if someone comes in with questions, they really shouldn't be allowed past that point. Um, I've already had some email correspondence with the chief about how they may handle a person that might be arrested and brought in that has some form of, um, uh, accessible need or requirement. And the person would actually be transported to another location. So they're, they're not necessarily served in, in that building. Um, but if the, if, um, an officer or someone is interviewing someone, they really shouldn't be being, bring, be bringing anyone into the, any of the back offices or the meeting spaces. Um, I would suggest that you establish one room on the upper level as a public meeting space. And then perhaps an accessible toilet up there at some point. Um, there's no great rush, there's no great hurry, but that's, you know, the, the short answer to comply. Um, the doorways on the upper level, um, I think the majority of them did comply with the necessary width to accommodate someone that might be in a wheelchair. So that's a good, um, that's something in your favor. Um, not so much on the lower level. Um, there are much narrower hallways, corridors, doors down there. So again, accessibility doesn't work well on the lower level. As far as vertical, um, transportation, um, if, if anything was to ever be entertained, um, perhaps a platform lift could be installed. It's a much lesser cost than an elevator. Um, elevators, you're talking probably half the cost of the value of that building, uh, or the, a significant portion. Um, and we'd also have to discuss if that elevator would be beneficial to go up to what some may call the third floor. It's not easily accessible. It has the side stairs and the winder stairs to the upper level. I guess the town manager offices were there at one time, I was told. Um, certainly not accessible, but if they are staff-only spaces, they can still be beneficially used. You just can't bring anyone into those spaces. So that's why having accommodations on the, on the main level would probably suit you best. Um, let me just see if there were any significant highlights. Um, as far as building code issues, the penetrations in walls, penetrations in ceilings, some of those things are just maintenance items. Um, when penetrations were made, they should have been sealed. Um, they, they were not, or perhaps some maintenance person was in there and performed some work and they just, they didn't seal it. Um, it's always best to have wall and ceiling penetration sealed so that if an event were to occur in the building, you don't have the spread of smoke escaping into adjoining spaces. Um, there were some ceiling tiles that were out. Those, those should be pa- be put back in place because the smoke detectors won't operate properly. Um, the seal, the smoke detectors are on the ceiling. And if there are openings in the ceiling, smoke can rise past the detector and, uh, not set off any alarms.
Thank you.
Um, the IT, the IT room, the IT room, it looked like it's been created so that air conditioning could be installed to keep the, to keep the equipment cool. Um, it's common, it's done. Um, but the wall should be finished on one side. Uh, wooden studs are still exposed. Um, so the other side of the partition should be sealed with drywall just to complete the installation and protect the wood framing. Um, some, some suggestions about adding some exit signs. Um, if, again, the general public shouldn't be down there, but if they are and someone's not familiar with the environment, an alarm goes off. When you're at strategic locations in the hallway, there are no exit signs that are, are visible. Um, nor are there, um, what are called exit discharge lights, emergency lights frequently called, um, that would illuminate the pathway in case the building lost commercial power. So these are all minor, minor things that I would recommend as improvements. Just make it a safer, a safer building. Um, there are stored items in one of the quasi boiler rooms. It's a boiler room and it's being used for storage. There are boxes and boxes of paperwork and paper items, um, um, old computers and, uh, video display terminals, the big boxes present. Things like that I would certainly recommend, um, being removed. Um, uh, let's see. Uh, completing the, there's a, a partition at the top of the stairs that separates the lower level from the upper level. With some drywall work there that hadn't been completed. I would, uh, have, make that recommendation as well. Um, I don't know the circumstances of when or how the, um, the building was transformed into its present use from the, the town hall into the police station. Um, the partition at the top of the stairs, in my opinion, is certainly a, um, a solution at separating the floors for smoke and fire separation so that the lower level didn't contaminate the upper level or, or vice versa. So there would be smoke, smoke and fire control. Um, exit signs, um, even in the, um, what I call the attic space or the third floor, um, it is used for storage. You can see that items and articles are stored up there. There are no exit signs of any kind. There are no, um, emergency discharge lights up there of any kind. So if someone was working up there at night or during the winter months when we have the, the darker, the dark, longer days, if there was a loss of commercial power, they would be in the dark. A lot of people carry their cell phones with them and they do have flashlights for emergency purposes, but it may not be enough to illuminate their safe passage to the exit to leave that floor and go down to the lower level to exit the building. Um, briefly about the ramp in the front, the ramp in the front, um, the slope, it's off a little bit. Don't understand why, um, it was done that way. Um, the, the, the intermediate landing could have projected a little bit more easterly in order to compensate for the correct slope, but that's neither here nor there. Um, I, I know the barricade is up. I don't know the timing of when or how long that barricade has been up. Um, perhaps it was identified that the slope was too steep for someone in a wheelchair and it was decided to take it out of service. That's, um, that's all the, the assumption that I have because the, the surface, it's the, the, the surface of the slope and the landing is in reasonable condition. I mean, it's not in disrepair. The front steps are in disrepair, um, but the ramp is intact. It's just steep. Um, the accessible route, I mean, signage, um, along with accessibility to a building, signage is always helpful for a person to navigate where the accessible entrance is. Um, there is a placard on the lower level that shows that the lower level is accessible, but the person can only really get as far as the vestibule. They really should not be going any farther. Um, so signage could be beneficial in the future for wayfinding and identifying the public entrance would be on the, on the upper level. Um, the, i- if the building was ever to be made fully accessible, we're talking about changing all the door hardware. Um, much of the door hardware are the, the knob type, uh, door operators and lever handles would be necessary for someone, um, being able to grasp and, and get into those, the public spaces. But again, hopefully we can work with you again in the future and deciding if or what you want to do with the rooms or the spaces in the building. Only those spaces that we touch or work on are required to be accessible. So it could be done in increments over time. Um, but if any new work is performed, it's, it's necessary to comply with the latest code. Um, even in buildings where you may not have accessibility into the building and you're doing a to- a toilet room alteration, the toilet room would have to comply. Argument is always said that, well, I can't get into the building. Well, it doesn't matter because it's some other future time. The building is probably going to have a renovation and there will be accessibility. So they want to have the alterations done in advance. Um, let's see, um, the tr- transaction counter, the, the, the transaction counter between the public and a staff member. Um, if the general public does go into that lower level, uh, reception area, the transaction counter in there is too high. There's a counter that projects too far. Um, there are furnishings and items in there that don't belong just in case someone in a wheelchair were to go in and visit the space. Now, one deficiency of that vestibule is that it's narrow. And unfortunately, it's deficient by half an inch for a clear five-foot width, which is required for a person in a wheelchair to go in, potentially turn around and go out. A person with a disability is not expected to back out of a space. They're allowed to go into a space, find a door is locked or some obstacle. They need to have a clear maneuvering area and then exit. In situations where you have a small deficiency, like a half an inch or so, um, things like that are submitted to the architectural access board for variance. And most generally, when there's something like that and you show that there's a hardship, those are CMU walls, you're not going to be made to comply. Um, and that way, if someone ever registers a complaint, you can say, okay, we know that we have this deficiency, but we have this variance from Boston and we're okay. Now, you don't go to Boston for each item separately. What I would recommend doing is perhaps preparing a laundry list of things and then presenting them with a number of issues that we're looking for some forgiveness on. And then you submit that for variance and they'll weigh in on their opinion, whether to grant the variance or not. Um, so that's kind of the, uh, reception area. Yeah, I mean, these were, these were lengthy reports. I don't know if anyone's gone through them and has read them. I, I hope you, I hope you have. Um, but the, uh, the cells, you know, the, the cells themselves, they're not accessible. So it's great that the police department already has protocols in, you know, um, that they'll institute if they end up having a person that has a disability and they're just relocated elsewhere. Um,
I mean, let me just stop here for a second and see if people have some questions of, about any of the information that they've heard so far. Anybody have any questions about the report?
Okay, most of the rooms are a good size. Most of the rooms are a good size for, um, people to maneuver. The deficiency are the door widths. Uh, many of the door widths are, are too narrow, not a big deal, uh, and, and the door hardware. Um, it's the toilet, the, the toilets is a bit of a dilemma. Um, but if you have a toilet on an upper floor and you have accessibility between them, that can work also. Um, I really wouldn't ever forecast you having the fine, don't take it the wrong way, but having the finances for an elevator inside the building. Um, it will take away a significant amount of square footage. Um, they are quite costly. Uh, we're talking for a building like that, even if you were to go up to the third floor, you're probably talking three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars to do it with all the modifications that are necessary. A vertical platform lift is a great solution. Um, I've already done probably half a dozen of them in the past three years. Um, it's a good, low-cost solution to transporting a, an occupant in a building between one floor and another. That's it. And those, those are ranging probably around a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty. Now, the projects that I've had, the accessibility component also entails some other plan alterations that they want to make. So a lot of the projects have really run around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But if, if the, the focus could be just on the lift and that alone could probably be doing it, uh, probably just over a hundred thousand dollars. That's if you choose to go that route. I mean, I'm not, you don't have to, but it would be a good, cost-effective solution for accessibility between the two floors.
Maureen, Bob Coz, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I'm looking at, uh, issues with building code, uh, that are, uh, projected at some ser- ser- serious money here. And I'm just wondering, you haven't addressed, uh, I see here, uh, uh, eighty-five thousand dollars for sprinkler and, and water source piping. Um, is there a sprinkler problem that is, um, uh, against code right now in that building?
Um, based on modern code, the building should be sprinkled. But we're not making any alterations. We're not doing anything that is going to make you do it. Uh, un- unless there's the determination by the fire department or the building inspector that there is some unique unsafe circumstance or some situation that they deem it necessary or appropriate. You're not making any alterations, so you don't have to, you don't have to install it.
In other words, being a limited-use building right now, uh, a, a, another, uh, expensive item I'm looking at is that front ramp, uh, which you had estimated at around eighty thousand dollars. So, so what, basically what you're saying is that because it is such, it is a limited-use building, uh, unless the building inspector feels otherwise, uh, there is nothing imminent that, that, uh, uh, would encourage us to put that kind of money into that building, um, for these code issues.
Correct. But I want to, uh, clarify it with a caveat that even though sprinkler systems are expensive, there have been at times clients that have communicated with their insurance companies with a feeler to say, if I sprinkled my bu- my building, what are my new rates going to be? Because a sprinkler building is a much safer building and there's less risk of any loss. In many circumstances, sprinkler systems pay for themselves over about anywhere between a seven and nine-year period. over about anywhere between a seven and nine year period, depending upon the um uh the difficulty um of installing the system. So it's not something to be completely ruled out, but perhaps someone may want to inquire with the insurance agency, is it worth our while?
Thank you.
If we were to look at simply the uh building issues that related to safety and just tightening up, for example, the ceiling of any place, walls that were penetrated, the ceiling tiles, the uh exit signs, the emergency lights. If we were to just look at those things that would make the building safer for the people that work there potentially, I'm just asking this of the historical commission mostly, I guess. Would any of this be considered a restoration as opposed to a repair? And you know where I'm going with this.
Well, well, you're, yes, I know where you're going with that and it is a, it is a issue of particular concern to me uh as a member of the historical commission and also a member of the uh community preservation um committee. It has always been uh a sore point with me as to what can be considered restoration as opposed to a neglect of normal repair. And all of a sudden, we need to have something done and we're gonna call it restoration. That's a whole subject that could take us three or four hours. And and I don't think we're prepared to do that.
Just one question if I may. If if um it's interesting to hear some of the the safety issues that have been outlined here. And I guess from my point of view, if there are some of them, I think you've rated them as high, low and and medium uh priorities. So
Only on the envelope did I, did I offer that.
We haven't touched on that yet.
Okay, sorry. Okay, uh, that's what, kind of where I was going is that I guess I would be interested to know how worthwhile it is to do some of those internal repair issues once we understand what our overall structure looks like. I mean, I think part of our hope was to try and preserve a historical building if we possibly could and then figure out how to repurpose it, if that's the goal we want to pursue or not. But um, you know, I guess I would like to, you know, if we can move into the the part about the the real outside and the character of the building itself and it's it's um it's structural problems. Because I think that's really, you know, the first thing we ought to also look at is, you know, what what are we thinking about here in terms of some easy fixes and then some other ones that are gonna take some some real effort to do.
That's where the greatest amount of work lies. It's it's the exterior envelope. The the things that I pointed out in the uh the building code and the accessibility evaluation. Again, you're not being forced into any of the accessibility issues. You haven't had anyone um register any complaint. Um, to my knowledge, the building official hasn't gotten anything, nor has um the um access board in Boston, because if someone were to register a complaint, they're quick to act. The interior things are minor relative to the exterior. The interior maintenance, um, you know, it's, there's not a significant amount of work. It's minor, could be done over time perhaps. Handyman. Many of it, a lot of it is really not difficult. It it just should be done. You know, I looked at the building for snapshot in time, how long it's been that way. I didn't query anybody and find out or report on any of that. So I don't know how long that's been going on. But minor, again, relative to the exterior. If we can, we'll just, if we can move on to the, if anybody has questions for the inside, let me know. Um, otherwise, I'll just go on to the exterior. It was the exterior that I, that Ed contacted me to to put some range on, uh, you know, high, medium and low. So that was just done um informally. Uh, I didn't reissue a word document. I just used the same document and put notations in the uh the side margins. I understand, I have done quite a few historic reservation, historic preservation projects in my past. This is an exciting project. You've got a hundred and seventeen year old building there that still has good life left in it. But you're right now at the fulcrum balance point of doing something with it or not. The roof is not in terrible condition. The Achilles heel there is the flashing. Um, you should get someone up there to address the flashing around the um the chimneys and the other locations that I pointed out in the report. Again, that that's maintenance, but it's it's paramount that that get done. We need to keep the water out. And you know, there are a number of other vulnerable points um besides the flashing. There is the caulking around the windows. Now, I know that they're old windows and I know they're in disrepair. You can either restore them or you could replace them in the future. But there's still the intersection of the the window frame where it meets the masonry openings. And there are cock joints there. They're they're flexible because the the materials expand and contract differently. Those things should still be maintained and sealed. It prevents water from getting into that wall cavity. There are a couple of broken window panes. Now, mind you, the one that I found on the south side of the building, most people probably wouldn't see, but the with the drone photograph, I could see where one of the panes is just falling out and it's just setting up on top of the roof. Now, easily accessible from the roof of the nineteen sixties addition. Not accessible from the inside of the building because it's the back part of that stage that's been framed over uh to create the the ceiling for the for the main floor. There are other miscellaneous holes and pipes. There are miss- missing bricks. Those things should be repaired um or at least patched. We don't want water getting into that wall cavity. We don't want vermin or insects coming in through pipe penetrations or unsealed openings. There's the seam between the nineteen oh four and the nineteen sixty building that's open. That should be, that should be caulk and sealed, some backer rod. It's again, it's it's tightening up the building. Some of these things are relatively minor. My bigger concern for the building really is the north side at that main entrance where the mortar is just, it's turned to dust. And it's, it's really in poor, poor condition. That should really be addressed. That's certainly a high priority, is is getting some of the of the repointing work done. You you can see it in the photographs. It's 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 quite evident. I'd like to see that put up high on the uh on the priority list. Understanding finances. You know, we would have to have a limited scope project, address the areas that really need it the most now. There are still a lot of other areas that need work, um, the east and west sides of the building. The um the pilasters between the windows. People, someone's done work there before. You can see it. Not, either not done well or perhaps there's movement because some of the joints have opened up again. That's a little bit of a concern. We'd have to do perhaps some forensic work um to see if there is any movement. At some point in time, um, it would, it would be interesting to learn when that perimeter drainage pad was put in. Pavement was put in on the east and west sides. And I think that they, it was done to deflect water that cascades off the roof and comes down onto the ground. Different solutions I've seen in the past. Um, it can be done with a gravel bed. This is the first time I've actually seen the pavement done. But part of the negative of having the pavement is that the water coming off the roof, because there are no gutters on the east, west side, you've got the water that's now gonna splash on the brickwork. And over time, it's going to start degrading the the mortar that was holding all the bricks together. So that really, that really needs some addressing. If you're ever in the building, if you go into the boiler room that's on the north side, you can see the deterioration of the bricks on the inside, which is meaning that the the bricks are getting moist and they are disintegrating. They're they're falling apart. Where I have some concern, I'd like to suggest, you know, as a a next step at some point is removing some one or two locations of the inside wall in some of those finished offices. Because what you're looking at is a finished space that has the paneling, probably some drywall. And then you've got a plaster wall behind it. There could be a good deal of moisture in those walls and those ball walls could also be disintegrating, just like you can see in the boiler room. It could lead to mold and mildew. It could lead to odor odor problems, uh, air, air quality problems. So, you know, on top of doing some of the repair work, I think we we should do some investigative work and see what's going on on those uh east, east and west elevations. I also had made a uh a note in the report too about making some repairs on the north side where the front entrance is and the ramp. It appears it's a very peculiar situation. I've never seen it before. But the front entrance originally had a granite step. And usually, the building envelope defines the building and then the exterior. For some reason, the granite step was brought into the basement space. And then there's wood framing that's been knocked around it. And the profile of the wood framing is weak. And you can see that there's a significant um deflection in the floor at the main entrance because the floor joists are deflecting. There would be a significant amount of carpentry work. But if the front is ever redone, if we ever were to redo the front entrance and the steps and the ramp, I would certainly make the recommendation to make the adjustment and remove that stone and put in the proper framing. The the deflection in the floor is significant. Next time you're there, you'll 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 see it. It it's not, it's not mistake, and you can't mistake it. You just, you just can't. The the roofs are actually in in pretty good shape. Chief Illingsworth had questioned me about um a leak that they had had in the back where the uh the meeting room was. So I sent him some photos from the from the drone that showed a couple of points that are um possibly vulnerable to where that water was coming in. I don't think it was from the broken window pane on the back of the um, the nineteen oh four building. But rather, there's some flashing where the the roof of the sixties building ties in to the nineteen oh four building. And again, those pictures were just taken, you know, months ago. If no one's made any repairs, those are still vulnerable points. And with the snow that we have, you know, those, those are points of entry for water. And it's, it's easy for it to get in and it's easy for it to travel. So perhaps, you know, getting a roofer up there first thing in the spring to make that that water tight would be, would be benefit. I'm sorry, I mean, I could, I could go on and on. I've got fifty fifty pages of pictures and text. Does anybody have any, any specific questions?
I mean, I have a, I just have a very specific one and I'm, and I'm really sorry to have to put it this way, but uh, you know, a a number of years have gone by and and I I love your analysis of this, but but listening to it, um, it feels to me like this building is beyond a town's ability to repair. And I just have to be super direct about that. I mean, this building is of extreme importance to me. I'm sure it's of extreme importance to the town and I don't, and I'm not dismissing that. But I'm, I'm wondering if it's beyond a municipality's ability to fix, repair and restore. And I'm wondering if this discussion needs to move more from, i- if that's the case, if it needs to move more from, we put a lot of restrictions on this building and hope to get it, you know, over time into private hands to be able to be restored properly. I mean, because I think we all want to see this building restored properly, but I, I mean, listening to this, I'm just, all I can see are like, I mean,
A lot of zeros.
Millions of dollars, it sounds like, to fix this. And I'm just not, I mean, I I don't want to speak for anybody else. I'm just not sure that, given what the town faces, that's gonna ever rise to the priority that of the other things that we need.
That's a stoop point to make, but uh, uh, and and it is to be considered. But until we know uh what the town is going to do it with that building in the interim. And other, what I'm saying here is, if it's gonna remain to be a police station for the next three or four years, and it looks as though we're talking at least three years before we're capable of making a decision and and move forward to a safety complex. So if in in that interim, something needs to be done to prevent it from further deteriorating. Uh, it has been allowed to deteriorate for a, for a long period now. Further deterioration does nothing but, in terms of an asset, lower its value. That's the comment I have to make about it.
Yeah, I agree with you, Bob. I think that um, one way or another, you know, my hope is that we'd have a public safety complex. Uh, but in the meantime, I think that, you know, we made some, we, you know, capital funding went into the Norris School to fix a number of things that had to do with water. And obviously, I'm hearing water as being a huge um thing here. And I think that if there's a priority list, that could uh go a long way in the next three to four years to make the building, uh, you know, at least to hold things up until there is the decision about the future of the building and the future of the public safety complex.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear Chris and Andrea both, Andrea is very experienced at this sort of thing. Uh, what, uh, I'd like to hear your comments, the both of you.
Yeah, we're here. I I I'm here anyway. Andrea, um, why don't you go ahead?
Well, I I do have a lot of experience working on buildings like this. Um, in fact, in Dedham where I currently live, we've just completed the renovation of um, one of our former school buildings into our um municipal building, not for um fire and police, but for um the town offices. So um, it is a an expenditure of money. When you look at the square footage costs, it's usually not significantly different from um new construction. So I always encourage people to be very careful and look at how these um buildings can continue to be town resources. In this instance, I think the point that was made about the decision not being made as to how this building will ultimately be used until the new uh facility has been developed and actually built is is really important. But the need to maintain it and keep it a viable resource for reuse, whether it's by the town or by a private developer, is I think the goal you're, you need to look at. So protecting the envelope um and making sure that the key um historic building elements aren't jeopardized in that three to five year interval, I think is the the goal that you're probably gonna be wanting to work towards.
Yeah. Well, some of the, some of the woodwork and the eaves is starting to rot. But I I
But I'd just be more concerned about birds nesting in there and those being points of entry. Even if they're not reconstructed, but if they're screened off.
Is that old or new building? Most of that cornice work, to me, like it was
The dental work was actually done on the 60s building, but the 1904 has a couple, a few isolated areas.
Yeah, I mean, I would repair 1904.
Oh, yeah.
The 60s building, I would not spend money on that. That's a pretty wretched cornice.
But I mean, I'm just an advocate of keeping the water out, keeping vermin and insects out. If, I mean, if worse pain to worse, if if the town had a certain value or a budget that you had in mind, let's sit and meet and discuss and see where we can put that money. Where you get more bang for the buck to protect it. I mean, that's the only thing that I can really suggest, because the work that I'm suggesting is going to be in the millions. No question. The glass blocks are failing.
Yeah. That was abundantly obvious.
Oh, it is.
I don't think the glass blocks are original, though, and I wouldn't expend much money. When I looked them up, they said they weren't developed until 1907. So it seems very hard to me to think that they would be used that early in Southampton, Massachusetts.
I'm not sure, because I did research into that on my own too. And the documentation I find is saying early 1900s. And I couldn't fathom them putting in wooden windows in the boiler room spaces. It just, I just, I don't know.
The lines, though, that glass block along that brick group, though, is very sloppy.
It is, it is. And the other side of the coin, sorry, is that because of that water cascading off and splashing, not having gutters, could have rotted the windows, and they felt that that was a much more sustainable solution to having any wood product that's going to have the water splashing on it. So if they weren't original, they were replaced soon after because the windows were rotting. Because the old windows never sealed as well as the new ones did.
Yeah, yeah. But I wouldn't expend a huge amount of money repairing glass block windows. They are not a practical window to restore.
As long as it's sealed on the inside, as long as there's no water that can pool in the block and come to the inside, then I certainly wouldn't put any attention to it.
Christina, did you want to add something?
Well, Andrea and I reviewed the report together, and so knowing what the budget difficulties are here in town, she helped prioritize what she thinks needs to be attended to first. The painting, I would say, again, focusing on the 1904 building, getting the trim painted to protect that from further deterioration, because that has been left to go way too long. The one thing, when I was reading the report first, the immediate thing that came to my mind, when the deterioration of the mortar on the east and west walls were pointed out as being caused by that concrete pad or the paver pad, I thought that should be a priority to get rid of that and make that situation better. So when the bricks are repointed, it doesn't continue to happen. And that seems like a fairly relatively minor thing to do as a way of improving the situation so the deterioration doesn't continue. Another real place of concern that Andrea pointed out when she and Bob Cozab and I looked at it three or four years ago, was around the front door. And she believes that the mortar and brick deterioration there are caused by that ramp. And that that needs to be removed. And Andrea, if you want to comment further on that, if I'm not getting it quite right, but that so the repointing, the repainting, the roof seems to be in pretty good condition. So don't touch that yet, except for a patching.
The flashing, the chimneys.
Right, right. But that's not a full re-roofing project.
No.
So the immediate things would be the repainting, the mortar repair. And then, and I would advocate for getting rid of those pavers. Gutters aren't going to go in probably, but getting the water away from the building with a gravel situation and drawing it away rather than having it splash back up. And then eventually, the window repair. For the moment, stabilizing them. And hopefully, and in that way, it's retaining its value as an asset. And even if the building is going to be sold eventually, it will be a greater asset if it is maintained than if we let these things go. And the Historical Commission has been concerned about its changing over into a liability for a number of years now. And I agree that this is the point where we have to do something, or it is becoming more of a liability than it already is.
Right. The items that you've outlined are going to still be very, very expensive.
Well, indeed. I understand that they are going to be expensive, but what is the alternative? Get rid of the building now. Sell it while it still has some value. It would be, I think, I think we all agree that it would be a tragedy just to see what was a town asset become a town liability, to lose its value. It doesn't make any sense to
I understand. No, I understand. I understand completely. Lots of clients in this position. But again, we will have to reconvene when you have some budget number in mind that you'd like to use, that may be palatable to the community, that can be put toward certain items.
One, just one thing, if I can jump in for a sec for what Andrea and Christina have been saying, it sounds like you've got an idea of that prioritization along with the report commentary there, that, you know, we could come up with some rough costs based on the range that's been provided in the report. But it seems to me that this ought to be able, if we focused on the 1904 part of the building, to be able to go out for grant opportunities, don't?
That's what I was going to say. Is there any way to rehabilitate these style of buildings with a grant entirely?
Well, at least partially, I would think there would be. And this one that we've been looking into, the new one from the state now, I'm wondering if that might not meet some of their criteria, this new one-stop economic growth grant.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm not sure. It's done, you know, a lot of stuff with Public Works and housing and Mass Works, et cetera. But I don't know if that might fit in that category or not. But, you know, we've got the grant committee trying to focus on things. And if there's a way that the grant committee could help to put forth a grant application somewhere, I think we could try and work that as well.
Incidentally, for your information, I just roughly put together the numbers from the high, medium, and low priority recommendations here. And if we were to just do just the high priority recommendations, we're talking in a neighborhood of thirty to forty thousand dollars. If we were to, in addition to that, if we were to do the medium priority items, which was labeled as a two-to-four-year lookout, we're talking another two hundred and twenty-some-odd thousand dollars. So potentially, within the next two to three years, to put a, to to save this asset, we could potentially be talking two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Bob, can I ask you, is the thirty to forty thousand dollar figure that you just mentioned, does that include what Andrea and Christina were just talking about?
I don't know, because what I did was just add up the figures from the notes that were low, medium, and high priority items. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know. My guess, my guess is, yeah, we're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars. Andrea, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that. Honestly, that's small money when you think about protecting your resource. It may seem like a large budget item, but I'd say anything under five hundred thousand dollars to protect your asset over five years' time would be money well spent. So I think, and it could be very strategically apportioned to do important things for that building.
And it has to be that way, because keep in mind that public procurement adds cost to these types of projects. It's not like you're a private enterprise. It's done for less money. It's unfortunate, but that's how the bid procurement works.
Yeah, and the other thing I was just going to comment on about grant monies. Grant monies are very hard to obtain for maintenance work. If this is not done as a comprehensive restoration of the building, it's going to be, I think, impossible to get monies. Every grant that you write says that the money cannot be used for routine maintenance, that a town or a nonprofit should be undertaking. So I would only caution you on that as you look at the opportunities for funding. If you were doing a comprehensive restoration of the exterior of the building, I'd say, head and shoulders, you'd be in an excellent position for it. To do a part of a roof and some spot repointing, it's going to be a much tougher effort, and I don't think you'll be successful.
Why don't you define comprehensive restoration a little bit?
Oh, well, I mean, that would be dealing with all issues. It would be window restoration. It would be mortar cleaning, mortar repointing, replacing missing brick, upgrade. And frankly, if you're doing comprehensive restoration, they'll go after you big time for exterior accessibility to the building. So you would be sure to have to make that front ramp compliant.
So that's great. I mean, then I guess the follow-up question to that would be, if we did comprehensive restoration, would the grant fully fund that? Would the town be responsible for apportion? And if the town's responsible for apportion, is it two hundred to three hundred grand to fully restore the exterior of the building, which is where we'd be at just to do routine maintenance on it?
The grants are almost all matching grants, one-to-one. So the town would have to come up probably with half the money. Right now, the Massachusetts Historic Preservation Grants, the MPPF grants, are about in the range of fifty thousand dollars. They used to be significantly higher. But there's not that much money. Now, you can, of course, match a MPPF grant with CPA monies and things like that. So there are ways to play that game. But I think the town would still have to make some form of financial commitment to do the full restoration of the exterior of the building.
But we can use CPA money to fix this building, can we not, right?
Of course, yeah. That's why I asked, restoration, not maintenance or repair.
Yeah. Very, very, very tricky. And from my point of view, I would look for guidance from the state on whether what we intended to do, whatever it is, whether we intended to do meets standards.
I would share.
Again, I very much against using CPA money to do what the town should have been doing right along.
I will share with you, with the MPPF grant. They're in the process now for next year's money. The caution with that is that you need to have a preservation restriction on that building in order to gain, to get their funds. And the preservation restriction is held in perpetuity. And even if you were to sell the building, if state monies go into that building, the state has their claws into it forever, regardless of who the owner is. So I just would have you exercise caution with taking money through that program, because it could make it difficult for the buyer. Because they are adamant about in-kind materials, no changes on the exterior. They're all about historic preservation. I get it. I understand it, and I respect it. But I do know that it offers significant limitations on people when they're looking to repurpose historic structures.
But that building is in your local historic district, isn't it? So you already have local
We don't have a local historic district.
The building's identified. It's recorded, but there's no preservation restriction on it right now with the state.
Right.
And they don't, correct, they don't give out the money as much as they used to. They only get eight hundred thousand dollars a year now to spread across the state. And the projects that I've worked on, that they are, my client had already had the preservation restriction. So there was a lot of money saved there, because there's a lot of paperwork involved with obtaining that requirement. It was fifty thousand dollars. I mean, it's a big number. Don't get me wrong. Not be whittling it. It's just when you're looking at projects that are in the millions or even coming close to it, fifty thousand, and them having their claws into you forever, can have some negative effect.
Is there anybody else that has a question or wants to add anything, not Ron or Chief Illingsworth? Anybody have anything else they want to bring up about the building or the cost or what you think should happen in terms of the level of repair?
Nope.
Nope, okay. It seems to me that there's general sort of consensus that no one's moving out of the building tomorrow, that we have to do some level of repair. And how it gets funded, I guess my question might be naive, because it might be us. But we have a building inspector, we have a historical commission, we have a select board. I mean, in terms of if there was a group to put something in front of capital or obviously writing a grant, whatever, would that be a collaboration? Would that be one group that would hold sort of the the keys to making a request, capital request, or CPC request, or anything? I know, obviously, historical would be making a CPC request if it involved restoration. But besides that, is there a group that would be the lead group in requesting capital? Would that be us?
Yeah, I totally agree with this. Like, we'd need a reasonable request that's realistic in nature to come forward to start chipping away at this. No pun intended. I mean, this is going to be a multi-year thing here.
Well, it seems like, you know, itemizing between what Andrea and Christina just said and what Jamie said in terms of the high-low-medium. I mean, I think if it's focusing on the envelope and the flashing and the ramp and everything, I mean, I think we need to get that itemized and look at the total amount and see where the funding can match. And it sounds like it involves the possibility of CPC, grant, capital. So we just have to really prioritize and itemize.
One quick question before we lose Andrea, for example, with her knowledge. Is, for a grant process, would a family foundation or private foundations be the way to go, rather than state or federal money?
If there are opportunities for that, they would probably be fairly local to western Massachusetts. And honestly, I'm not as familiar with them as I used to be. I don't have too much experience or success with any of those types of funding services.
Just trying to think, if the state one and maybe most likely the federal funding would have that issue about the preservation restriction, that that might be something that would be, you know, very problematic. So thank you for bringing that up.
Well, you know, one of the things about those preservation restrictions, if it was sold to a developer, the developer might want to take advantage of federal tax credits. And federal tax credits carry the same sort of requirements as the state restrictions. So I've certainly worked on properties where the two of them have been combined, and they haven't prohibited them from going forward. It is true that it does have a restriction on it, but I don't know. I personally don't have any I personally don't have any experience where that has killed a deal. But that's not to say that it doesn't happen, so.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I wonder, I wonder if a working group should be established to focus on this rather than have it, you know, be the full groups, the full boards and commissions. It might, it might take a focus group.
I think that's a good suggestion, Christina. I do.
Yep, I do as well. There are folks that are interested in being part of this group. I mean, I think that we need to make repairs to this building this year. I mean, I think we need to focus on the water and the damage that's happening to the building. And I think that we have an ad hoc grants committee right now. We have a lot of stakeholders right here. Are there people that would like to put together and move this conversation forward and get to the point of prioritizing, itemizing, and looking for funding?
Well, I'll speak up.
Okay.
Can't do it on my own, though.
No, I'll join in with you, Christina, if you want.
Me too. I'd be happy to join.
Okay.
Who's that?
Ian Illingsworth, and was that Bob? Bob, did you say yes?
No, because I feel a conflict there being.
Okay. Who said yes before Ian?
Doric.
Doric, hey, thank you, I knew somebody was stepping up. Okay, so we have Christina and Chris and Ian and Doric.
That's good.
I think that's a good group and.
Could be someone from the select board.
Christina.
Yeah, okay, sorry, yes.
And she's also on the ad hoc grants committee, so that would be a great tie-in. And are you the representative also to CBC? Who's our representative of CPC?
Me.
Christine, okay.
Yes.
All right, well, I think that.
I would volunteer, but I don't know what kind of expertise I could lend to this conversation.
Yeah, that's okay, I think we have a good starting group there.
Well, I think, Francine, I don't think that should deter you if you have interest.
All right, so does that sound like a reasonable charge? Is to look at the report that Jamie just presented and also with your expertise, you and Andrea, to come up with a priority list and of, you know, the rough funding idea? Or what the total dollar amount is for different levels? And then possible sources of funding, including capital, CPC, and grants?
That's reasonable.
Okay, well, thank you all for stepping up and coming tonight. And Jamie, thanks for your presentation, really appreciate it.
Certainly, certainly.
Well done, Jamie.
I'm just hoping that the, the reports are going to be, and hopeful, good working tools for the committees. Because the text is accompanied by pictures, they're easily found. It's floor by floor, elevation by elevation. And, you know, if I'm needed, if my services are required, someone can get in contact with me, whether it be Ed or someone else. I want to see another building saved, it's important.
Yeah. No, thank you, that was very interesting, thank you.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, thanks very much.
All right, I'll log off then.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Have a good evening, Jamie. Thank you. Hi, Jamie.
Corinne, I think I could close the historical part of this meeting if you have other business to take care of, correct?
Yeah, that'd be great, if you're all set to do that.
Do you have a motion from one of the historical commission members?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we will adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thanks, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Andrea.
Night.
Yeah, thank you very much, Andrea and Christina.
Yes.
Okay, so I would just ask, there's a number of things on the agenda, there's a lot, actually. I think that any one of these things could be down the bottom with pending items. In other words, we don't want to lose them, but then it might not be lengthy updates. So if that's the case, feel free to just say that there's not much of an update. The first is the town accountant update.
And reference checks have come back positively on Regina. So what I would probably suggest is the select board plan to have executive session meeting to negotiate a contract with her.
Okay. So the first time that would happen would be just the select board, correct? And so maybe we can just add that for, I believe you are going to look into having an extra meeting with John Workman. We talked about the 6th of March, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, March 7th. I thought it was the 2nd, but.
2nd, okay.
I'll go back, I'll go back and I'll let you know.
Okay, I actually have it right here. So then we can plan on just having it at a regular meeting. So we'll add it to the next select board meeting to, is that okay?
Mine.
Yeah, that's fine. So we would meet first and discuss, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
If you could just send us a copy of the previous accountant's contract, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
Let's see, I don't, oh, Fire Chief, yeah, 6:00 PM on the 2nd. And did you reach out to the other applicant?
I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
I did not get it yesterday or today with the revised schedule. But I will definitely do it tomorrow.
Okay. And where are we in the contract? How many weeks are we in on the vendor contract for Regina?
I'd have to double check, I believe it's, I think we're into the ninth week now.
Okay, so is there any concern around having it, just bringing it up at the next time? Because that would be a month out if we meet just ourselves and then follow up with a meeting with her. It might get tight.
It was for 12 weeks, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, what I might think about is adding the discussion just amongst the select board members to that meeting on the 2nd.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then you can follow up the week after it's regular, yeah.
Good idea. And I'm assuming the information that John Martin had shared with us last time relative to her current contract would still be available, correct?
Yes, we would still have to, we'd have to buy it out, but John was able to negotiate the costs that down.
Okay, and that stands for the rest of her contract here? It's not going to expire or anything?
Correct.
Okay, any other, any questions about that? Sounds like a good plan. We'll just talk about it on the 2nd and then we'll follow up the following week in executive session with her. We might want to have it a little bit earlier on the follow-up. How about FY '20 close update?
It's fiscal year '20 has been closed out and Vicki has also submitted the Schedule A for us, which is a DOI requirement. So that is all now taken care of.
Good, any questions about that?
No, just, just quick, is Vicki working along with, is Regina working along with Vicki in any way so that, you know, there's some cross-training going on there?
No, that was all done after hours and either at nights and weekends for the close.
All right. Okay, moving along, assistant accountant position update.
I've received one letter of interest on it, and that is it so far.
And you expanded this, the, you know, the search, search, the internet organizations you were using?
Yes.
We got one.
It's on the accountant and auditor's website currently, which I hope will get us some.
Wasn't it also?
What's that? I'm sorry, breaking up.
Was it also put on Indeed?
It has not been put on Indeed yet, we have used up all our money. So I can put it on, I'll just have to find an area that we can transfer some to.
Okay. Okay, I think we also decided that, you know, whoever's the permanent accountant would be part of the decision in terms of hiring an assistant, but.
Yeah, I think that's a very good
Yeah.
way to go about it. I think it's definitely a plus to have the permanent part of that process.
Yeah, but I think if we haven't gotten much in terms of takers on the municipal sites, then I think we do need to go to Indeed then, so we can at least get some people in to look at.
Okay. Any other suggestions or questions about that position? Okay, I think we'll move along on the accountant one and then decide whether or not we want to allocate the funds and go on Indeed. I know that there's a pretty big audience there, but anyway. Personally, somebody that is, I mean, how long ago did that come in, Ed?
What's that?
You said you had one person had a letter of interest?
Oh, probably about, I don't know, a week, week and a half ago.
Okay. Can you reach out to that person anyway and just see if there's somebody that we would want to interview or at least, you know, let them know that we got the application?
Sure.
Okay, any update on the East Street Bridge?
Yes, just to let you know that the DEP has published the open comment period for our East Street Bridge waterways license. It was published on February 15th. And the close of that public comment period is March 17th, 2021. And then they will be able to issue our license and VHB will be able to get the bid documents finalized and help to bid.
Well, that's good news.
Good.
And they're, they're going to be prepared to do that as soon as the public comments session is over? Over?
Yeah, I think they still need some comments from DOT on the bridge design, but I'm going to double-check with VHB and make sure that as much as possible is lined up and done so that once we have that waterways license, we can move forward and hopefully a very short time period to put those bids out.
Yes, I'd really appreciate that, that's, we don't want any room for delay here.
No.
Yeah, and both VH, HB and DOT have held up the show, so to speak.
Well, we even got held up on our own conservation end, as far as I'm concerned, too, so.
All right, well, let's move it along. Anything else, anybody else have any questions about that? How about the door-to-door solicitations? So Trinity Sola had written a letter, their attorney, that they were, they wanted to sort of enforce the fact that they're essential business and that they should have the right and there's no reason why they shouldn't have door-to-door solicitations. So the Board of Health voted in favor of a moratorium and we discussed doing something together. And today we got a statement from KP Law with language relative to that. So I didn't get a chance to look at it because I think it came in right before the meeting.
Yes, it did. Yeah, Michelle sent it to us today and I sent it out this afternoon. So I can read it to you, they did draft an order on behalf of both select board and the Board of Health. So it's temporary moratorium of commercial door-to-door solicitation in the town of Southampton. Whereas on March 10th, 2020, Governor Charles D. Baker, acting pursuant to the powers provided by Chapter 639 of the Acts of 1950 and Section 2A of Chapter 17 of the General Laws, declare that there now exists in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts a state of emergency due to the outbreak of the 2019 novel coronavirus, COVID-19. Whereas on March 11th, 2020, the COVID-19 outbreak was characterized as a pandemic by the World Health Organization. Whereas the Federal Centers for Disease Control have determined that COVID-19 is spread mainly by person-to-person contact and that the best means of slowing the spread of the virus is through practicing social distancing and by minimizing personal contact with large groups, environments where the virus may be transmitted. Whereas public health data reported by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health shows that as of February 22nd, 2021, there have been approximately 539,644 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Massachusetts and approximately 15,508 confirmed deaths in Massachusetts. Whereas on February 18th, 2021, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health reported there was 328 confirmed cases of COVID-19, a 14-day, a 14-day percent positivity rate of 6.7% and a 14-day average daily incidence rate of 55.8 in the town of Southampton between January 31st, 2021 and February 13th, 2021. Whereas commercial door-to-door solicitation constitutes an activity that may increase the risk of spread of COVID-19 in the town of Southampton. Whereas pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 101, Sections 13 through 34, the town of Southampton Select Board is empowered to regulate hawkers and peddlers and may be, and may, may by regulations not inconsistent with this chapter, require hawkers and peddlers to be licensed except as otherwise provided and may promote mulgate regulations governing the same. Whereas pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 111, Section 95 to 105, the town of Southampton Board of Health may use all possible care to prevent the spread of infectious diseases in the town of Southampton. Now, therefore, the town of Southampton Select Board and the town of Southampton Board of Health issued the following order regulating commercial door-to-door solicitation. Commercial door-to-door solicitation with the town of Southampton is hereby prohibited. Two, for the purposes of this order, commercial door-to-door solicitation shall mean and include any person, either principal or agent, who goes from town to town or from place to place in the same town selling or bartering or carrying for sale or barter or exposing, therefore, any goods, services, wares, or merchandise either on foot, on or from any animal or vehicle. Number three, all individuals or entities currently licensed by the town of Southampton pursuant to Article 5 laws shall immediately cease commercial door-to-door solicitation. Four, no new licenses for commercial door-to-door solicitation shall be issued pursuant to Article 14 of the General Bylaws and/or any applicable provisions of law through which the town of Southampton or any board, committee, commission, official or employee thereof is a licensing authority. This order shall not apply to non-commercial door-to-door solicitation or other activities protected by the First Amendment Statute, including, but not limited to, religious proselytizing, anonymous political speech, the distribution of handbells and non-commercial soliciting and canvassing in general. Number six, this order shall be effective immediately and will remain in effect until rescinded or until the state or of emergency is ended, whichever occurs first. Number seven, if any provision of this order or the application thereof to any person, entity or circumstances is determined to be invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such determination shall not affect or impair the validity of the other provisions of this order or its application to other persons, entities and circumstances. And then it would be signed by the Chair of the Select Board and the Chair of the Board of Health and it would be certified by the town clerk.
And you'll send us, you'll give us a copy of that for our bylaws, right, Ed? Someone like to make?
You're breaking up. What's that?
I just said I would like a copy of that letter for our bylaw.
Sure.
Solicitation. Thank you. Uh, would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we, um, we accept the recommendation from legal counsel in terms of issuing a joint moratorium on commercial solicitation in town.
Now second that. Any further comments, questions? Can you just remind me, Ed, is there any date other than temporary moratorium? Does it say until the governor lifted?
Yes.
It said until the governor.
Yeah, yeah. And so how would, how will we now notify Trinity Solar? Will this go from the police chief to Trinity or from us to, to them? Or how does this get out?
Ian reminded us today that actually the hawkers and peddlers license is issued from the state and the only role that he plays is sort of a character background, something or other. So I would sign it and then, um, Rebecca from the Board of Health would sign it and it would be notarized. And then, um, I imagine
I'll lose it.
He would send it to the attorney for Trinity Solar.
Okay.
Yes, I would.
Okay. So any other questions?
Nope.
All in favor? Ishmael, I.
Falls I.
Uh, Groden, I. I'm not sure if Matt stepped away. Okay, well, we have three and one, um, abstaining or at least non-vote. Okay, thank you. Um, does that signature have to be notarized? Or do I sign it and then the document is notarized? Do you know, Ed?
It just says certified by the town clerk.
Okay, so that's.
I'll check with KP.
Okay. Okay, if you're ready, we'll run in, we'll go into the, um, uh, new business. The first is the disclosure of a non-elected municipal employee of financial interest, Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. That was in our packet. This is, um, not uncommon. Randall is filling out a form because his, uh, family member, wife, is the attorney for a real estate transaction where he may be obligated to, um, do curb cuts or other kind of, uh, highway department work on the property. So did you get a chance to look at that, everybody?
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve that?
I move to, uh, approve the Highway Superintendent's disclosure.
I'll second it.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Ishmael, I.
Falls I.
Broden, I.
Uh, Randy, before you move on, there was another item under that other section.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you for reminding me. Let's go back to that then.
Near and dear to our hearts.
Yes, 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 yes. I'm sorry. Maybe it was in italics. I don't know. I didn't, I ran over it. Uh, bylaws amendment review. So go ahead, um, Francine.
Okay. At the last meeting, we had talked about, and we didn't, we didn't formalize it, but designating a certain dollar amount and then based on that dollar amount, um, have, that would cover the legal review of the law, bylaws that we've already presented, that the bylaw committee has already presented to the Select Board, that the Select Board has, you know, accepted, moves to legal before it can go to town meeting. So we're kind of in this bottleneck here. So we have on record eleven, uh, the twelfth one is, is with the Attorney General's office right now, but we do have eleven. And rather than having, unless the Select Board wants us having the bylaw prioritize that list for attorney review, would the Select Board like to prioritize the list? If I sent it out, it includes the amendment, the article on the Select Board, on restrictions on issuances of local licenses and permits, on overnight parking, fire lanes and fire hydrant use, council on aging, sidewalk cleaning, community preservation, general government. Those would all be for adoption, go forward if, if, you know, if, if legal agrees, it would go forward to town meeting for the vote. And then we had three that we put out there for, uh, for deletion. And then that was fees to the town treasury and then two having to do with the transfer station that I believe we rolled into another bylaw. So of those eleven, some kind of order, if we could get half of those done, which, which five or six would we, we want to prioritize? Is really the question that we have today. And then in addition to that, we have completed our work on two additional uh, bylaws, which you were seeing for the first time tonight on building numbering and on nuisance versus noise, but the building numbering has been, um, reviewed by the zoning board, not the planning board. I took it to the planning board. They said it was not in their bailiwick. And, uh, so I took it forward to the, uh, zoning board and they've agreed, uh, with some changes that I made on their behalf. The only caveat to that is the former building inspector, Tom Quinlan, had approved it, as did the fire chief and the police chief, because they all have safety issues around being able to easily identify buildings by their numbers. And, uh, I sent it to Ron Lauren last week and I, in the hope that I would hear back from him by tonight and I haven't. So the only caveat on looking at the one tonight would be contingent on his agreement with the content. And then the other one on nuisance or we're not using noise because it has other implications, um, in terms of legal implications, according to Ian, but it has been reviewed by, um, the police department and the Board of Health. And so you have the language on, on, for both of those bylaws. I do apologize. I had sent the final edits, the, the clean version after I sent the one to Ed and somehow the one with my edits still ended up in the package. So I apologize for, for those crossouts and things like that, but the language has not changed. So how do you want to proceed with this?
Well, personally, I know both of you are on the bylaws committee and I know Matt must be, um, putting his little one to sleep. But I, I think that we should get, uh, some idea of what the legal, uh, funds would cost to do one through eight and then the deletion of nine, ten and eleven. You know, personally, I just still have some, you know, like challenges with the building numbering and then nuisance one. Just in terms of just, I don't know, the building one is, you know, it has to be this wide, it has to be this high and it's, you know, it's just, I don't know, I just would like to have more public input into it. I just, um, I know that different committees have approved them, but I just, I find that they just make me a little bit uncomfortable and I, I know that, uh, there is some guidance that might be, um, advised from the standpoint of police in particular, but I, I think it's worth, I mean, I know we want to move these along, um, and I think that it would be worth finding out at least one through eleven. What, um, what would, and I also think in the middle of a pandemic, if we're still going to be at a heightened, you know, to, to, to spend long periods of time reviewing bylaws, I, I think that we should move forward, but we should look into one through eleven.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine if we, if we, we get what we get. I mean, if, if we can't get to all eleven.
Yeah.
Which of the eleven do you want to prioritize if we, let's?
Yeah.
That would be the decision.
I have two questions. In, in one through eight, are these all amendments to existing bylaws or are any of them new bylaws?
Let me, let me just look at the chart here. Um, let's see, Select Board is existing. Restrictions is existing.
Yeah.
Overnight parking is existing. Fire lane and fire hydrant are both existing as separate articles that we've combined into one. The council on aging is existing. Sidewalk cleaning.
I think that's clearing, clearing maybe.
Yeah, pardon?
I think it's clearing, not cleaning.
Okay, sidewalk clearing. Thank you. Community, community preservation is existing and general government. Let me see on my list here.
Yeah.
General government is also existing.
Yeah. So those have all just been.
They're all, those are all revisions.
Yep. And just one clarification on the one on the licensing one, is that like the third one you mentioned there? That is one that had already passed town meeting, but there was a couple of sentences of erroneous language in there.
And that had to be left out. That's it.
And so it, it just is a matter of saying, okay, we have to just quickly do an amendment to, to allow us to take out those two sentences that slipped in from some other bylaw. So that's not a major review. So there's really seven that need, you know,
Yes.
at, I guess I would say. You know, in more detail.
And on, and on ten and eleven, which are deletions.
Yes.
If these have, if they're being deleted and you believe that language is being put somewhere else, do you know where that's being put somewhere else? Because you'd probably want to tie those together.
Yeah.
It was related to things that were related to the landfill and because the landfill terminology is not existing anymore, it's a transfer station. I think both Board of Health and Randall thought that they were no longer relevant.
Right.
I'm not.
So you're not, so you're not taking any of that language and putting it in, into another bylaw then?
I'm about ninety percent sure. I can, I can check on that in terms of where we did that or we can check on that, but I, I think we are just recommending they be, um,
Eliminated.
Yeah, eliminated.
Yeah, they, 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 they both showed us, um, documentation that really negated the need for this.
Yeah, but it had.
They came to, they came to one of our meetings.
Right. But it had to do with the, the, part of it was vocabulary about referring to landfills rather than, um, the transfer station. So they, they were kind of, um, you know, outdated to say the least.
Yeah.
So it's really in that first.
I just, I just want to make sure if you're moving any language that.
That's a good point, Ed.
Correct, yeah.
Deleting from and what you're adding to are actually all tied together and on the same ore.
Gotcha.
Right. Yep, gotcha.
Okay, so we'll.
I would support, uh, you know, depending on the, you know, the legal funds to review them. And by the way, do we spend the legal funds to review them only before they go to town meeting? And, but doesn't, and then the Attorney General approves them. We don't obviously pay funds for that. So, um, depending on the amount of money that, uh, would they be willing to give us an estimate or should we approve it based on a ceiling amount?
Well, yeah, I think that's what we had talked about. Chris had raised the notion of about six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
To see, you know, if it takes them maybe a half an hour per.
And who knows? But I mean, just to see how far it gets us on that list, but, um.
Could get a six or seven of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then I don't, I, I'm not gonna prioritize them. I would support, um, you know, all of them with, you know, sidewalk clearing instead of cleaning, I would support all of them, um, depending on the, the legal, uh, budget. So hopefully, it would fall within, um, six hundred dollars. I don't know if, I, I don't know if it's worth that being part of the motion. I think we do have a little bit of time, time between, uh, you know, if we just want to say that we support them and, and then ask, um, Ed, if you'd be willing to check in with KP Law and find out what would be the, uh, how much would it cost to review this and get back to us about it? What do you suggest, um, do we set a dollar amount or do we, uh, say we support them all and, um, let us know if it exceeds six hundred or what?
Well, the board voted at the last meeting for the six hundred dollar amount.
Okay.
But what I can do is send them off to Michelle and say, okay, how many of these can you do for six hundred dollars? And basically, how much more would it cost to do the rest of them?
Yeah, okay. All right. So, I don't mind making a motion since both of you are on the committee to, uh, support, uh, one through eleven. Uh, we voted last time for it to be six hundred dollars. So I, I support bringing these in front of the voters and hope that they fall within what we had previously voted as utilizing legal funds. Could somebody want to second that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Uh, just to say, I think I would, I would like to just hope that they would focus on the, the amended ones, not so much the, the deletion ones. If they run out of money, then it's the one through seven or eight. They're probably the highest priority over the deletion ones, but.
Right, because if the other ones remains on the books, that's not gonna hurt anything for now.
Right.
I would, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And then just one other to add to that. They, you know, as you remember, we had the, the wetlands bylaw that got approved, but then there were commentaries back and forth from the AG that, um, town council was looking at and I think we would really, Concom, I know, is wanting to know if there's uh, anything that we've got to worry about on those. So I think if we could, um, press for an answer on the, the wetlands one as kind of the prelude to all of this work, but, um, we do need to get a, a final answer if there's something that has to be revised on that one or not, hopefully.
Yeah, and that, that came up.
I did talk to the attorney that was doing that, uh, last week and I think he, I think he was gonna send me something, so I'll double check.
Great. Okay, that's good. That's good. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Yeah, falls I.
Ishmael, I.
Uh, Groden, I. And I don't think Matt's back yet. Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna see. Yes.
Matt, um, sorry, I was, you were minimized. Um, so we were just voting. Last time we voted on six hundred dollars, uh, towards funds to move some bylaws. We just, um, three of us voted in favor of authorizing the first, uh, group, including the deletions and hold off on the other ones, the nuisance and the number, lettering.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
All right.
So you, you, you don't even want, I, I wasn't proposing they go to the attorneys yet, but we're just proposing that this committee look at them and let us know, you know, we're gonna move them forward or, or go back to the drawing board on them before we would send them to legal. So that's, that's why I brought those forward and we are hopefully gonna be finishing up the one on soliciting. Within the next, I'm gonna say two to three weeks, but sooner.
Okay, can I be clear? I thought we just voted to, uh, prioritize one through eight.
We did.
Okay, and then, um, then if there is additional, uh, funds and it's not beyond the six hundred to, to go ahead and, um, delete the nine through eleven and the rest of them, we would be reviewing.
Right.
Okay, all right. So make sure I'm clear about what we just voted on.
Yeah. So can, can we look at maybe reviewing the, the two, the building numbering one and the nuisance one at, of another Select Board meeting next month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So they're in this packet. We'll just send them out the next time then. Thank you.
Yeah, and just, just a question. Ed, do you need more, the, the versions again sent to you of those old bylaws or those should have, are those not already with town council?
Maybe, but if you got them, send them to me again and I can just send them all in one package.
All right, we'll do that. We'll get, we'll get them to you.
Okay. All right. So we're up to COA State FY twenty-one, um, grant authorization. Why is it, it's FY twenty-one, Ed, as opposed to two?
Yeah, it, it, it's this current fiscal year. Correct.
Okay.
Another example of what COVID has done for us.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So basically, there's. So ba- basically there's.
Go ahead, Ed.
So ba- basically there's two pieces of this, one is the contract with the state itself that, uh, the board should approve, and I will ask you to, uh, make me allow me to be the signatory, your legal signatory on it again this year. Uh, and if you do that, then I will fill out that paperwork, so Reenie can sign it to make me the legal signatory. And then the other piece of the puzzle that is different this year, uh, I think the combination between the fact of COVID nineteen and also the individual that was doing this uh, particular program ended up resigning is in all the past years, the C O A had to, uh, submit a, uh, a budget submission to, and that was part of the approval process by the state. This, this year, because of those two factors of COVID nineteen and, uh, the fact that the person that's been there for a number of years had resigned, um, the state did not require the C O A to make a budget submission, so because of the fact that we had something to go by to check on in the past, I asked the C O A to do one. Uh, but, so that's in your package and it totals up to the fourteen thousand, uh, four hundred ninety-six dollars that were allocated through this state formula grant. Uh, but I will let the select board make the call if we want to use their budget submission, uh, and use that to check off how the funds are expended, or do we want to just say, okay, there's fourteen thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars, uh, that may be spent and the C O A can spend that in any manner they want.
So doesn't the grant outline parameters as to how it can be spent?
Yeah.
Not this particular year.
Really?
One is, I'm very disappointed that they cut the money for the state formula grant, uh, for one thing. Wasn't it closer to nineteen thousand dollars last year and it's now cut down to fourteen because they reduced the amount of money per senior that they're getting, giving the money, is that true, Ed?
I knew that is tr- true for what is proposed for fiscal year twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
I don't necessarily know if that is true for fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, I mean, un- under a normal year, this would have been probably all done like last August or September, uh, at, at the latest, and we would have signed off, uh, on it, so.
Which is why I thought it was supposed to be F Y twenty-two, but the other thing.
Exactly.
If there was nineteen thousand available, as you thought, Reenie, why are we claiming only fourteen?
No, I'm, I, I'm referring to fis- F Y twenty-two, they cut the money for the grant, uh, it's a, based on the number of seniors in town and they reduced it, which is completely, uh, like, I don't think that's, I can't believe that they're doing that, but I also think that we should just take the money without itemizing it, because I think there's been an intention by the C O A in the last few years to move money off of grant, so, uh, uh, put people on the operating budget, and since we don't know if that's going to be approved by the finance committee and us, I think we should just take the money since they're not asking us to itemize it, and, um, then when things become clearer in terms of the operating budget, I think then we can just, you know, they or we can decide where the money lies.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that sounds like a good plan.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the form and also, um, allow Ed to be the signator?
Okay, I'm, I make a motion to approve the F Y twenty-one submission, uh, C O A submission to the state, um, and authorize Ed to sign on behalf of the town with the, um, the grant, the application.
Is there a second?
That's not the application, it's the actual contract.
Okay, the contract.
Yep, F Y twenty-one.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
This one I.
Falls I.
Groden I. Okay, great. COVID nineteen update, we had our meeting earlier today.
So they'll be. No, go ahead.
Uh, COVID nineteen update, we had a meeting this morning, uh, Dawn, Jerry, Ian, John, Ed and I. We have it every two weeks, we change it to Tuesday, so it coincides with the select board meeting. Um, basically, the, uh, all the departments are well-staffed with P P E. Dawn Snyder, uh, is looking into M I M A, I think there was a uh, email that went out that there is additional P P E and cleaning supplies available through M I M A, so he is following up and I think, uh, writing to each department to see if we can, uh, boost our supply uh, of P P and cleaning supplies. Uh, people are healthy in the departments, the emergency, um, departments, um, people have been gotten at least their first vaccine, if not their second one, those of them that want it. I'm talking about E M Ts and police. And, uh, the, um, and a few people watched, you know, you might remember that CARES Act funded a large electronic portable sign, and so there was a tutorial webinar or meeting that, uh, a few of them had attended on how to, um, work that. What else, Ed? Is there anything else?
Uh, uh, I would, I would say probably one of the biggest pieces I would add to this is that, uh, I did receive word, uh, from, through our council on aging director this afternoon that, uh, Representative Sabadosa had sent her an email and it basically, uh, confirms that the Northampton COVID nineteen vaccination clinic, uh, which submitted a plan to the state to be able to keep providing vaccinations, uh, COVID nineteen vaccinations to the communities that, uh, they are supporting has been approved, uh, uh, and they will be able to continue operate and provide those vaccinations uh, to the communities they are currently serving.
I think Jerry also mentioned that there have been no new cases in town and the, you know, the portion I mentioned at the beginning of this, um, that a lot of the people from the council on aging were helping to get, uh, appointments for seventy-five plus before the floodgates of the sixty-five plus opened up. And then there's been a bit of a standstill, but, um, I was, like I said, I was able to book an appointment for this Thursday for my husband, so, um, I think that everybody just has to keep, um, refreshing and trying to get, uh, in. Um, but everyone's trying to get vaccines.
Yeah, really, just a question, I know, I, I'm sure many of us take a look at the, the bi-weekly, or sorry, the, the weekly, um, public health report coming out of Boston and, you know, Southampton's obviously still in the red, we're, I think we were the only town in the county last week to be still in the red, and I guess the way I'm understanding it better, the more I've delved into it, I guess, is that our, our positivity rate lo- looks high, but in the scheme of things, it's kind of a false indic- not a false indicator, but it's not the complete indicator, because there just is not much testing happening unless people are feeling ill and, you know, go get tested, so therefore because we have such little testing, our positivity rate is always going to show kind of high, is that true? Am I sketching that right in terms of my interpretation of the data? No?
Yeah, because you don't have dilution.
Because we're, we're a community of under ten thousand dollars, or yeah, ten thousand people.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it, it is, it is drawn straight from the number of positive cases reported over the last fourteen days.
No, I understand that.
Once you're, I, yeah, so the, the, any community over ten thousand, it's actually on the percentage of the positivity rate.
Okay, but it, but I guess our, okay.
So we're not on percentages, is what you're saying?
Hmm.
Uh, believe it, believe it or not, at one time, and I think it was like two weeks ago, I think if we were over ten thousand people, we actually dipped below the five percent and would have been back in the yellow, but because we're under ten thousand people and we're over twenty-five, uh, positive cases in the last fourteen days, we're in the red.
Hmm, okay, my analysis was wrong, I guess I was assuming that it's a factor of just not having testing, you know, like, like say Northampton or Amherst that, you know, is testing, you know, bi-weekly at U Mass, for example, or twice a week at U Mass, I mean, there's obviously going to be a lower.
Yeah, it's a numerator denominator issue.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, and, 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 and that, that doesn't really apply to us, uh, it's straight by the number of positive cases.
Mm-hmm, mm, okay. Well, hopefully this.
I will say about three weeks ago, we, we, our numbers dropped, but the last two weeks, they clicked up a bit again, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're supposed to follow all the usual rules until we, uh, get more numbers vaccinated.
Yeah, okay.
So can you give us a quick update, Ed, on the open space and recreation plan and also the hazard mitigation plan?
Sure, sure, open space and recreation plan, I'm working with, uh, Ken Comia to incorporate all of the, uh, edits, comments, uh, grammar suggestions that were made, uh, the state has officially approved our draft plan, so, uh, once that, Ken has all of those incorporated into it, uh, he'll send that back off to the state, uh, and we should be all set. And then the hazard mitigation plan, uh, due to the fact that, uh, originally we're going to have our workshops, uh, later this week, uh, but because of the fact that I'm trying to kind uh, track down some contact information for some holders, uh, uh, and businesses, um, that's been put off till Wednesday and Thursday and next week.
Okay, if, I think there was planned initially to be four workshops, one, uh, late afternoon and.
Right.
On two different days, so this, just the sooner that we know about.
Three P M and six, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we already have like a council on aging meeting next Wednesday, I mean, there's already meetings planned, so the sooner we get those scheduled. Because there's already going to be conflicts, I think. Any questions about either of those?
Just, just one on the open space plan, wasn't there a section that, that had come back that needed some revisions or something? I know when I was talking to Ken about master plan, he was saying that he had a section that had to be looked at again or something, I thought, but maybe it was just, I thought it was more than just simple edits, no?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay.
I had, I had sent him the, the A D A reports and he, he added that, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay, no, that's fine, uh, maybe he took care of it then, that's fine.
Alrighty, so we have the employee leave practice policy due to COVID nineteen.
Yeah.
Due to the C D C guidance on that?
Yeah, I thought that the first time I had had the, the Mass State, uh, guidance in there, uh, and you would ask for the C D C guidance, so this time around, I actually, I added the C D C guidance, but I kept the Mass Gov guidance in there also. And you can see there's actually three different versions of the C D C guidance, uh, because it's been updated a couple of times, so I wanted to show you basically all the, uh, all the versions of that since when COVID nineteen first started. Uh, then I believe there was a December update and then the latest ones, uh, was in February.
So is, is that all going to be added to the narrative that was developed? Or is it, is it a footnote reference kind of thing? I mean, I found the, the state and C D C stuff just very hard to read, number one, so if we're going to incorporate it, it needs to be more readable than it is, uh, or is it just a reference piece to be like an appendix to the, the core policy type thing that you drafted?
It, it kind of defines what, what people should be doing.
Yeah.
When they're quarantined, after they're quarantined.
I know, it's just, it's, I just find it very hard to read.
Yeah, and I'm trying to figure out which one, if you put them all in there, which is the most recent one? I don't see a date.
The Feb, the last one, the February one. And that's, that's the one, and I just sent them along to basically line up with the dates that I had put in that, that draft policy.
I think the big question.
And, you know, I can do it any way you want, you know, the, the disadvantage of adding any of that language to this is, uh, the fact that, okay, two months from now, it may change again. So now you got language in a previous version, so you, I mean, you, you may want to, you know, just, you know, reference, even though, uh, it does reference from symptoms onset or positive result per C D C guidance, could, I could, uh, put an asterisk in the, on the, in the bottom that says, please see latest version of C D C guidance.
I think the big question is, uh, you know, I'm just thinking about where I work in healthcare. Somebody is quarantined, they use, um, sick time and vacation time or personal time, so the big question is, uh, are we interested in authorizing our employees to be off, fully paid, um, and not using benefit of time? And follow the guidance in terms of what days they're off or how long and all of that? What kind of documentation do they have to show relative to case tracing or being contacted, saying that they have in fact been exposed? Or is it totally an honor system? Do they need any kind of medical authorization? Or are we going to approve a policy that says they feel like they've been exposed, then they follow the C D C guidance and they get up to two weeks off paid, um, as part of a temporary policy? I think that's the question, because C D C is going to change and we can reference all we want, and they're going to say fourteen days versus ten days, but our big question is, are we interested in giving the employees two weeks off, paid to quarantine and/or follow the C D C guidance? To me, that's the question.
I, I don't think it's a question of or follow the C D C guidance, I think it's and follow the C D C.
And, yeah, yeah, that's what I meant.
Well, what, what are, what are, I mean, uh, uh, coming back, we, we so desperately need some H R expertise. What are other companies putting in as a policy besides, I mean, this is, this is.
Really what are municipalities putting in, I mean, I just told you that, you know, in my world, you're out, then you use vaca- you bet- use benefit of time, so, so I think that this was, the question is, do, do any of these employees need replacement value? Like, we, we'd be putting out any money to replace somebody who's out for two weeks. Um, do we, are we offering this as a gesture to the town to be able to do that? Is it based on, I mean, to me, those are the questions, do we require any medical certification? Do we require some evidence of case tracing? Or is it simply based on an honor system that they were contacted and they were exposed or they think they were exposed? I mean, I think those are the questions, C D C is going to change and people just have to follow it.
Well, I, I definitely agree that there should be some kind of medical documentation to support it.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely, no question.
So I would add that to it.
So that would be a, a test result or a letter from their doctor or something like that?
Yeah, a diagnosis, yes. And who does that go to? Does that go to the department head, does that go to the town administrator?
Did we also talk about this policy being run by P Q B?
Yes, they're looking at it on Thursday night.
Okay.
On the agenda.
Okay. All right, so why don't we see what they have to say before we jump in ahead of them? And you're the representative, I think maybe you can bring our concern that there should be some evidence of documentation from some authority, whether it be they were contacted by case tracing and they were informed that they have to quarantine or, you know, from a medical provider.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you. And then, and then reference that they would follow the CDC guidelines.
Right.
Everything over that, the current ones, whatever is current in that.
Right. And I do think it's a hardship to, you know, to have to quarantine and be out of work and to use up all this time that you had. So I support that. I just think that it just needs to be backed up by a little bit of, you know.
Yeah, I think it's a very.
Documentation, that's all.
Yeah, I think it's a very generous and, I mean, under these circumstances, it's a great thing for us to be able to provide to employees.
Yep. And did we say that we were going to want to have it retroactive to January, right? Beginning?
That's what we said originally.
Yeah.
After the other one expired in December.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
Right. End of December. And, you know, keep in mind that we really don't offer a lot of sick time. You know, so that's one of my concerns. And then also, please keep in mind that you know, whether I find out I've had a close contact with someone that had COVID-19 today, once I find that out, I probably don't want to go out and get tested tomorrow because I have an incubation period, so it might be three or four days. So just keep that in mind when you're thinking about asking for, you know, either that contract tracing, so there are test results or the letter from a doctor, that there may be some days in there that someone knows they've had close contact, should stay home, and we don't want them coming into work and, you know, if they've got it spreading around, when they actually get tested, they may actually come back negative.
Right, but they also would be informed, anybody that you find out that you came in contact positively, ideally, they would be case traced and you would be identified as a close contact. So there would be documentation somewhere, even though it might not precede your being out.
Yeah, because some of the case tracing is taking a long time, right? I mean, some of the case tracing is not keeping up with the actuality, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think.
Except I know of, I know of cases where that could have happened and it hasn't happened. The person wasn't contacted by, neither the person that was positive or the person that came in close contact were contacted by case tracing. And I'm not saying here in Southampton, so please don't take it that way. I just know of other instances.
Yeah. Okay, well, it sounds like there's general support for people not exhausting all their sick time in order to keep everybody safe. But I think that it would make sense for PQB to address it first. And I think there's, it would be helpful to have some kind of authority to being out for two weeks of work. I mean, typically you're out for one week of work and you're required to have some kind of a doctor note. So I think it's worth having some authorization, however that would look like. So I'll leave it up to PQB to discuss, okay? Does that sound all right?
And I probably might suggest that it's, it might be best with that of a central point of contact for those test letters, whatever, and maybe they come back to me rather than the department head.
Okay. Okay, so you'll bring that, Francine?
Yes. Yeah, so we'll look for, you know, whatever medical documentation.
Okay.
And then have it returned to Ed, have them reference these, I'll bring this, the CDC stuff in terms of the quarantine, that's fine. You know, this information is so good. I was just wondering, I mean, obviously you have to be able to read it, it's really small, but on that, how would we get some of this information out to the public in town? It's not too complicated.
You mean the employees, not the public?
Employees and the public.
The CDC guidance, you mean?
Yeah, yep.
Oh, okay, I got you. I'm thinking policy itself, so.
Oh, no, I wasn't talking about the policy. I'm sorry. I was talking about the guidance. It was great.
Well, I would hope that on the CDC website, the language is more legible. I don't know. I don't know, but I can't believe that it's in such, I don't know, I found it hard to read. So whatever.
I think I'm going to let that one up to the Board of Health.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, because they put out some messages, there's some of the website, letters went out to all the public. So I think that I also found it to be, it clarified a lot of things and I think it's a good website. But that's something that I can also bring to the Board of Health and they have a meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Great.
Okay, so we'll bring that one back, okay? And then the Doors, anything on the Doors Green Community Grant, Ed?
Yeah, the Energy Audit Company sent me some information on both the police station, the town hall and the library. But I've asked them for some further information on their reports, because while I claim there's a lot, you know, a lot of savings there that they can do, they didn't really have a specific proposal of, okay, you know, how many lights are going to be changed or what they were going to do in the I've got a little bit from this company and I'm just looking for a little bit more. And as soon as I've got that, I'll send it along to you.
Okay. And is this timetable June 30th?
What's that?
Is the timetable for pulling together the cost savings from the $136,000, whatever it is, is that timetable for that June 30th this year that we have to show savings in order to get funds?
No, we've got, we've got five years to get to the 20% savings.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Any questions about the Doors Green Community Grant? I think the revenue expenditures is a placeholder. Last meeting, we did talk about that. We're going to do it every other meeting, so we'll see that next time.
Correct.
FY22 budget, it was good to see all those budgets coming through and it was also good to see the Finance Committee setting up the appointments. There were some departments that were not there, but I noticed the Board of Health is having a meeting Thursday specifically to approve the FY22 budget. I didn't see the Water Department, I don't think. Most of the other departments did an awful lot.
The Water Department. Yeah, the Water Department and the Transfer Station are both enterprise funds, so they don't flow to the operating budget. They actually flow to a separate article. However, I did send this template to both the Water Department and Station. Well, what we will see on the actual town meeting warrant will be the usual form for the enterprise funds. I just wanted a little more detail that leads to that, that we all know about this year.
But can I ask, the same the same guidelines apply to them as they do to every other department in terms of budget preparation? Is that correct? I mean.
That's correct.
Okay.
However, in the past, because of the way those enterprise articles are formed, I wanted a little more detail and it's just in those enterprise articles.
But coming back to an issue that we've had in the past, enterprise funds have wanted to use their funds to give their employees higher raises than everyone else has gotten. That doesn't.
And this.
Followed by the budget.
And this form breaks that out. Right, this form breaks that out, so we can see it plainly.
But, yes, but I checked it out and they have, according to what I read, and I'll dig it out again, they're supposed to follow the same guidelines, budgetary guidelines as all the other departments. And those are set by, in this instance, the Select Board. In other towns, it could be something else, but. Okay, it's not.
In addition, there will be a warrant article for these enterprise funds, which will be, I imagine, approved or not approved by the Finance Committee. So I'm hoping they still meet with the Finance Committee then to go over their budget.
Yeah.
They will.
Okay.
One small one, just for CONCOM, because we have a meeting on Monday. If they have one item on the budget request, will they be scheduled to meet with CONCOM at all? I'm sorry, to meet with Finance Committee? Sorry?
Who?
CONCOM.
Who?
CONCOM. They have one?
That's, if the Finance, if the Finance Committee wants to meet with them.
Okay.
That's up to the Finance Committee.
Okay, I didn't know who was scheduling the meetings.
I mean, if I had to kind of guess at it, I would probably say yes, probably no, they won't ask to meet with them, but you're right.
Okay.
Okay, so what else you want to ask or know about the FY22 budget?
I guess the big question in the elephant in the room is what is the revenue?
Yeah.
I mean, we can't put this in any kind of context.
Right, and that's one of my projects over the next two weeks to put that estimate together to match up with this.
And I know.
And Matt said it before and I agree with him, is probably traditionally in a normal year, we probably have somewhere between $280,000 and $400,000 worth of additional revenue over the previous year. So I kind of use that in the back of my mind as I, as I go through these items. You know, Hampshire Regional Approved Preliminary Budget is $60,000 of that. I just talked about $27,000 of that in insurance for this particular year.
97,000. 90, no, 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 I'm sorry, 2,700. 27, yeah.
27,000.
27,000.
Right. But, you know, but for example, and, let's see. For contributory retirement, there's almost $98,000 of an increase fiscal year '22.
And employee benefits was almost $74,000.
In total, yes. Take that, $98,000 which is in there. Unfortunately, we do have some reductions in group health retiree, group health insurance for this particular upcoming year. And it's also the our actuarial study for OPEB came out of there too, so.
Well, you know, I looked at all the budgets and it's pretty clear that, you know, the first column is, you know, pretty much just contractual increases. The second one is really where they would like to see the department be. And certainly many of the department heads would like to have some salary reset happen, especially among department heads. Right now, I don't think there's been a movement on the part of PQB. We've talked a lot about, do they finally adopt the salary scale that was presented by Art Lawrence when he was the Chair? Is that based on recent figures? The PQB figures don't, haven't been updated since 2017? I really think we need to get, once and for all, some answers from PQB about what they want to recommend.
All right, I do communicate that with them.
Okay.
It doesn't always make the agenda, but we do have a new category for things that may not make the agenda under other business, so I will bring it up again.
Okay.
And I provided that information. I provided the, Ed had, I don't know if it was a more recent version, but a February 2020 version of Art's report versus the November 2019 that I had before. I'm assuming they're one and the same, but if they're not, we're still going to go with the one dated, the most recently dated, which was February 2020, which took into account the school year '21.
Yeah. It wasn't that long ago that the presentation was done, so, I mean, I can't imagine it was, you know, two years back even then. And Ed's, I mean, Art's obviously around, he was on a meeting earlier. I think we just had to get an answer one way or another and decide whether they're going to move in any direction.
Yeah. So just as a matter of process, is it up to PQB to recommend to the Select Board to adopt this salary scale? Is that, I mean, are they the ones that present it to us and say, we think this is valid and that, you know, we should actually vote on it and adopt it as our salary scale going forward? Is that the way it works or?
I believe that that's how it is, that it is based on the recommendation.
In a perfect world, that's how it should work.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll see what they say and it's good to see the process moving along. Are there any departments that you have not heard from at all? Has everybody either planned or has a meeting in the short term or? It seems as if most.
I would say, I would say yes.
What about Norris School?
Yeah, there's a they're on their own statutory timeline.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we'll keep that up.
And I think the news from, I know they're doing without, they're getting by, but from the regional high school is really, for a second year, it's really terrific. I mean, in terms of our budget.
Yep. I agree. Anything more on the budget? Any questions? We don't have any PCFs, so PRFs, there are no licenses or permits, so ready to move on to the warrant? Actually, you know what? I'm sorry. Is there any other necessary business that cannot wait until the next March 9th Select Board, actually, March 2nd Select Board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a little something. I'll keep it quick, but I would like us to vote on this and potentially draft something up in support of this. I saw this as a as a news article on Western Mass News and it's been talked about at length over the years. And it's with regard to our, it's with regard, what I would like to see us doing, what I'm proposing, is support for a bill that is now at the state level and been reintroduced to put a deposit on NIP containers. So I'm not sure if you know this, but they're all over the streets. They pollute. They get thrown and discarded out of cars. And then they end up in the waterways and the rivers and the oceans and just, you know, with regard to the litter, I mean, it's tremendous and you know, so people are spending a lot of time picking these things up. I think that a deposit on them would improve the environmental consequences of this, but I also think that it would provide an incentive to pick them up as well and also to not throw them out in the first place. So just a little bit of, I'm just going to find this here real quick so I can read it to you. I had it all teed up, but it, but it didn't refresh. So this month, the proposed bill was refiled for 2021-22 legislative session. The Agawam City Council is formally showing their support for the legislation. The reason for the, you know, more support of this is a gentleman by the name of Jack, who used to spend a lot of his time in Agawam picking up these NIP containers over the course of his life, was hit and struck and killed by a car over this a couple of years ago. He was in full support of this the entire time. This is caught, you know, certainly state and even national news. And this is something that was, you know, something that he had been pushing for his entire life, basically. And so, with that being said, like, you know, this is back in the state level. A number of towns are writing letters in support of this, of this important legislation, and I think that we should do, I think we should do this the same. I mean, I think we have this problem in town. I think it's a nuisance, and I think that we should join our neighbor in Agawam, and I think East Hampton is doing something very similar. I did see a few of the city council members posting about this recently on Facebook. And I just think it's a good thing to do, and I think we should just write a short little letter supporting it to the legislature.
Do you have the number of the bill?
That's a good question, I could probably get it, it's not in this news article, though.
I'm sure Lindsay must have it.
It's called Jack's Bill, is what it's called.
Yeah.
It's called, it's by the name of Jack's Bill.
Yeah, if you guys remember, I think it's, I'm going back to probably last fall or summer, I forget when, but Concom sponsored a person in town, there was a student doing a, part of her university project was doing a sort of a cleanup around town and taking a census of what was found, and her name was Torb, their name was Torb Shista. And they ended up finding that the majority of things collected were the NIP bottles, and that Concom forwarded that on to Lindsay and a few other places, and it made some news, I think, with Lindsay and John Vellis as well. So we, you know, we got our feet on the ground on it, you know, months ago. So yeah, this makes total sense to support it, I wouldn't have any objection to that.
I mean, the call right now is to have towns that support this to step up and to basically write a letter in support of Jack's Bill.
Sure, why not?
I don't know how that happens, I don't know if we have to make a motion, which I'm happy to do, and maybe I could draft a little something, paragraph in support of the bill as stated or as written, and send it along to Vellis and to Sabadosa and/or the state, you know, whatever the process is there, I'm naive to that, but whatever the appropriate channel would be to submit.
Well, for someone that says you're naive, you just hit the nail on the head, so.
Then that's my motion.
That's the process.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? It's Jack Coughlin was his name, I'm just looking at his picture right now.
Yep.
So that's, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Roll, and I.
Groden, I. Great.
Thanks, Ed, sorry to task you with that, but appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Thank you. I did have two other things under other business. The annual report is due, I plan to write up our section over the weekend. I know it's due, did you want me to send it to you all for approval? Do you want me to just submit it? I know I've written it, I think, for the last three years, up the Select Board. I'm happy to do it again this weekend if people are, would like me to. Okay?
I think Matt should do it. That's payback, just kidding, Matt, just kidding.
Payback, I love it.
All right, so I just want to let you know about that. I also wanted to let you know that I did draft a letter of thanks to John Martin, and we also talked about possibly getting him a plaque. So I just wanted to read you the letter that I drafted, and I asked that we put on letterhead, and then I'll sign it to John. Dear John, on behalf of the Select Board, I want to offer my sincere gratitude for all your years of service on the Southampton Select Board, your leadership and dedication to the board, the employees and the residents was truly admirable. We appreciate all you did for the town, including your service to the Finance Committee, Public Safety Committee, Greenway Planning Board, and negotiating team with the schools, among others. More recently, you helped us tremendously with researching disability insurance providers and policies, and interviews for the building inspector and town accountant. Thank you, John, for your many years of service and lasting contribution to the town of Southampton. We wish you good health and much happiness as you retire and move on from Southampton. With regards, the Select Board. So we also talked about maybe getting him a plaque. Just think that he had more than two terms on the Select Board and all these other committees. I know when I retired from the Board of Health, I was awarded a plaque, and it meant a lot to me. In fact, it's probably behind me on the wall here. So I just wanted to mention that Ed was gonna look into that, if the board is in support of that.
Definitely.
Yep.
Yeah, we could always reach out to him when we get it, ask him to join the beginning of the meeting, and then present it to him, and then have him come by and pick it up when he's in town, if he is, okay?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, all right, so let's move on to the warrants, then.
Okay. Yeah, we have three warrants this evening. W2133, which is a vendor payable warrant. It's in the amount of $1,503,206.50. And the reason that one is so big is that includes our quarterly assessment for Hampshire Regional. There's also a payroll warrant, P2134, in the amount of $291,366.24. And then a payroll deduction warrant, PD2134, in the amount of $47,197.82.
Great, thank you, Chris, any questions about the warrants? All right, no documents for signature? We have four sets of minutes, people get a chance to look through them?
Yeah.
Yep. It's great to have them so soon from the last meeting, doesn't have to shake your brain much, I mean, they're.
Yeah. It's great.
I think I just made a note on one of them, hang on. Anybody else see anything?
Francine, if you don't mind, I'll just mention the one thing I noted on the February 9th one, just about the, there was some discussion at the CPC meeting, and I think it was attributed to maybe Concom presenting a project, and I think it's both Concom and Open Space are working together on a potential project for CPC. So I just wanted to add in Open Space Committee on that one, that was all, from my knowledge of it. Renee, you know better maybe, but it was on the February 9th one under the Select, under the Committee Reports section.
February 9th, we have February 5th, oh, February.
By who?
It would have been Francine's report on CPC. But since I've been at both meetings. So they, I believe, both Open Space and Concom are working together on some potential properties, a potential property for acquisition, maybe, and will eventually, if things come together with the landowner, would approach CPC more definitively with a proposal, but I think they were both there to talk about it, is my understanding.
Right, it worked, yes.
It's just not Concom alone, I guess is my point. Just add in Open Space, Concom and Open Space, that's all. Just adding.
So you want that amended?
The only thing I saw was on the minutes from January 26th, when they're listing the Select Board priorities that we're passing along to our legislator. It says, it's the first item on a new business, it just numbered, there was just a, it says, Greenway number one, two public safety complexes, and then it says, two again, communication infrastructure. That was the only thing I saw. Just has to be renumbered, that's all.
Okay, where's that one?
First item on new business on January 26th. Anybody else see anything else?
Nope, they were great.
Yep, very detailed. Would someone like to make a motion to approve all three of, or four of them?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve all four sets of minutes with a couple of very minor changes.
Okay.
Do we have to read the dates into the minutes?
Oh, sorry, oops, I think I just closed it, hold on a minute. Sorry, to approve the minutes for the November 5th, 2020 session, the January 26th, 2021 session, the February 5th, 2021, and the February 9th, 2021 sessions.
Good, we're really getting caught up.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Groden, I.
Roll, and I.
Okay, anything on the pending items?
No.
Okay. All right, that brings us to open time for the public. Is there any from the public who would like to speak? All right, any correspondence?
None that I have.
Anybody else have anything else? All right, then that brings us to executive session. We're going to go into an executive session, and we will not be returning to open session. Executive session is under Master of Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Number 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator. So it is now 9:41. What time would you like to reconvene in executive session?
Ten minutes. Ten, yeah, 10 o'clock.
9:50?
Yeah.
All righty, then I'll have a roll, a roll motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
Francine, Chris, all in favor, roll call.
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Roll, and I.
And Groden, I. All right, so we'll follow link, and Ed, y'all join us from the get-go, and we'll see you at 10 o'clock.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
All right, to you.